Well, good evening. Welcome to the July 23rd, 2024 regular Bellevue City Council meeting. Before we start, we, Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Zahn and Deputy Mayor Malakutian and I were all at the Children's Business Fair at the downtown park. And Councilmember Lee invited the winner of the entrepreneurial prize to come to our meeting tonight, and I know she's here. Can she stand up? Let's give her a big hand. I don't know if I'll say your name right. Is it Samara?
Samira.
Samira Kosher?
Helen.
Okay. Come on up. I think you have something to say. I know you're going to tell us what you did, but just for the audience to know, you created gluten-free...
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Gluten-free bakeries, and you took the grand prize. You're 14 years old?
10 years old.
10? Okay. Oh, that's right. Okay. The 14-year-old is the person who organized the whole event.
Yeah.
And that was Aryaman Sinha, and he had to raise $10,000 to put that event on. So let's hear from you, the winner.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samira. Thank you for inviting me. I'm so excited to be here today. Thank you to Mayor Robinson for all your support and encouragement. Also, thank you to Councilmember Lee for recognizing me at the Bellevue Children's Business Fair. I had a gluten-free bakes booth at the fair. My mom has celiac disease, which is an autoimmune disorder that is triggered when you eat gluten. It is very difficult to find healthy and gluten-free and tasty baked goods in bakeries and stores. A couple of years ago, me and my mom started experimenting with gluten-free bakes using healthy alternatives such as gluten-free oats, oven floor, and sweetening them with bananas and maple syrup. We wanted to share with everyone that gluten-free food can also can be healthy as well as tasty. This is how I came up with my business idea. I was thrilled to see how many people liked the goods. Some even came back for more. By the end of the fair, we were all sold out. Winning this award has been so rewarding, just like a cherry on top. Thank you once again to Councilmember Lee and Mayor Robinson for recognizing and supporting me and other kid entrepreneurs. I feel so honored to be here today. Thank you.
All right. Good for you. And this was a children's business event where they had children entrepreneurs come to the downtown park, set up tables and booths, and sell their products. And Ascend Hospitality was one of the sponsors, and you got a cash prize, didn't you?
Yeah.
Good for you. Thank you so much for coming down tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we have Karen here for our clerk. Could you please read the role?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers Zahn.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes, would you please do the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have three proclamations. Oh, and, um, let's see. Samira, do you want to get your picture taken with everybody? Not right this second. I'll tell you when. Just stick around for a minute. Okay, we're going to do three proclamations tonight. We have Black Business Month proclamation, read by Councilmember Lee, then International Overdose Awareness Day proclamation, read by Councilmember Zahn, and India Day proclamation, read by Councilmember Nguyen-House. So let's start with Black Business Month proclamation. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 as an initiative to recognize black-owned businesses, highlight the vital contributions of black-owned businesses to our country, and to encourage their continued development. And whereas black-owned businesses account for approximately 2 million companies, or 10% of U.S. businesses, and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. And whereas black-owned businesses are essential to flourishing communities and culture as they support families and provide careers within the Bellevue community. And whereas throughout history, despite facing systemic racism, redlining, and even extreme violence, black businesses continue to grow and thrive throughout the nation. And whereas black-owned businesses serve as a representation of perseverance and success, often play an active role in community development and reinvestment, and can have a significant impact on social and political change. And whereas Bellevue's black-owned businesses play an important role in spurring economic development by providing access to wealth-building resources for current and future generations of black families. And whereas the Bellevue City Council strongly proclaims that diversity is our strength, and the success of black-owned businesses is vital to our city, our city's strength and success. Now therefore, I, Karen Lee, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2024 as Black Business Month in Bellevue, and encourage our community members and workforce to support black-owned businesses in our city. Sign, Lynn Robinson, Mayor, City of Bellevue.
Thank you. So I'm really delighted to welcome Vanya Bynum, Kevin Henry, and Tracy Brown up here to speak if they'd like to. And when we're done with all three proclamations, we'll invite you back for a picture, okay? And Linda Whitehead.
I'm disciplined.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and welcome. My name is Tracy Brown, and I am the principal and owner of Equity Leadership Collaborative. It is a consulting, coaching, training, and strategic planning, and actually, I also do workplace investigations for entities within the state of Washington as well as government. I want to thank Mayor Lynn Robinson, along with the City Council, for inviting us here today to talk about the black business entrepreneurship and how important it is to African-Americans in the community overall. As I read, as I listened to your proclamation, I got a little choked up there because, you know, having developed the Commission of African-American Affairs published report that just came out in December that looked at the social determinants of health and economic stability is one of those. And African-Americans and black entrepreneurs provide such vital resources as well as gifts, skills, talents, as well as our businesses to the community, and it's vital to the overall economy. When we looked at the numbers, African-Americans' numbers are still pretty low. And so what I want to say is thank you for honoring black entrepreneurship in the city of Bellevue and continuing to support black entrepreneurs, because it is very much vital to the community. It's very much vital to the economic stability that impacts health outcomes, education, as well as housing security to the community for African-Americans and their families and outcomes. And I just want to say thank you very much for being here and continuing to support black entrepreneurship within the city of Bellevue and the ripple effect that it has throughout the state of Washington. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, stick around and we'll do, or are you going to speak too? Okay, please.
Well, this is like really kind of a déjà vu experience, because I was here at the city for 20 years, starting in 1994, and helped direct the DEI program when it was just a D. I think we just had the D. when we first started. There was no E, EIB, or any of those other letters. So I often always talk about how I think Bellevue was at the, was a forerunner in recognizing businesses, working with the community, and really drawing on the strength of the diversity that exists here in the city. So I really appreciate you honoring black businesses, and I, my hat goes off to anyone who wants to start a business. My business is called KPH Media LLC. We do offer strategic planning, consulting, DEI training, communications training, writing services, and video production. I work a lot with nonprofits. I work with small businesses, large businesses, city agencies, even church groups if they need my services. And I guess I just want to encourage, because Bellevue is doing such a great job at, you know, doing what you're doing tonight, and also connecting with businesses, and businesses can be found sometimes, but you really have to look. I mean, I have met with business owners at a lot of, for instance, a lot of these community events that are happening this summer. I think this is a prime time to get out to some of those community events, because just about all of them, including the one on August the 17th here in Bellevue, have a lot of minority-owned businesses there. And that's a great way to make contact with future vendors, future partners in what you're trying to do here at the city. So I would really encourage you to spend the last two months of summer, or beyond that, really connecting with those businesses, because they have a lot to offer, but they also need the recognition that you're giving us tonight. And all I can say is just, you know, keep on going, Bellevue, because I often talk about how I think Bellevue, especially for a city its size back in 94, I think it was maybe only 80,000 at that point, to fully commit to a full-time DEI program at that point was really phenomenal. So once again, thank you for honoring us, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor. Good evening to council members. I first like to also thank you for recognizing black businesses, black-owned businesses. I am probably the youngest one right now, and I first came out here many years ago as an engineer. My first internship was in 1991, and I finally came here in 1995. I am a former engineer-turned-artist. And the one thing that strikes me is the growth that the city has had in terms of embracing diversity, because when I, when I started in my art, actually started pursuing it, I didn't feel that it was that welcome here. And I did most of my work in Seattle, in Kent, and in other areas. And probably within the past five years, for me, it has really been amazing to meet people who really, really appreciate diversity, and you guys continue to work toward diversity. And I just love to see that in the arts. So I never said my name, though. I'm Vanya Bynum. I'm a native of Mobile, Alabama, and I've always been a lover of movement and arts in general. I am a married mother of two, a former computer engineer, a dancer, instructor, choreographer, and founder of VC Bynum Arts and Education, which is based right here in Bellevue, where I live. Our mission is to uplift communities through the power of art, education, and transformational stories that deepen our connection to African-American as well as other cultures of the African diaspora. We're also committed to providing dancers and artists of color opportunities to teach, perform, and positively impact all communities through the arts. We believe in what I call "arts for the greater good," and that includes everyone. And we celebrate cultural differences by nurturing diversity. We amplify the voices of all artists. So for me, we are strengthening the voice of artists of color so that we can share and we can strengthen the whole community. And that's what really, our diversity is our strength, and the fact that you embrace that is really amazing. Our programming curates creative performances and classes that empower, educate, and transform. And I believe that black businesses are crucial to our community, because representation matters, and it provides opportunities for others to see possibilities in what they can achieve. And we know that the children are our future, and when they don't see positivity reflected back to them, then it makes a big difference. So I just want to say we're so grateful for the support of the city of Bellevue, of the community, and of Dr. Whitehead, and we thank you for recognizing our efforts to heal and connect the community through the arts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Whitehead, do you want to speak to the Bellevue International Festival that's coming up?
Well, I'm excited to say that these three people sitting next to us have been a part of the planning committee for the International Festival. Our very first, that will be happening, of course, August 17th, 12:30 to 4:30, in the Crossroads Park. It is going to be an event that no one should miss. Need to say thank you to Amazon for providing 500 backpacks with school supplies. We will have robotics. It's just going to be a lot of fun. So everyone, it's free fun. Come with your family and enjoy.
That's August 17th?
August 17th, 12:30 to 4:30, Crossroads Park.
Great. Thank you so much. So stick around and we'll do a picture when we're done with all the proclamations.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next proclamation is International Overdose Awareness Day, read by Councilmember Zahn, and accepted by Ron Rude, our Medical Services Officer, 105, from Bellevue Fire. Councilmember Zahn.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is recognized annually on August 31st to remember those lost-to-overdose deaths. And whereas no community is immune to drug overdose deaths, in King County, the number of overdose deaths grew exponentially during the pandemic. New data shows that the number of overdose deaths is dropping. And whereas the pandemic-era surge in overdose deaths was largely driven by fentanyl, which is a synthetic opioid drug 100 times more potent than morphine, 50 times more potent than heroin, and involved in 80% of all confirmed overdose deaths occurring in 2023, compared with 10% prior to 2018. Deaths from methamphetamine overdose have also seen a sharp increase. And whereas often consumed unknowingly by users, fentanyl is being used to lace or make fake prescription pills, and is also found in dangerous street drugs such as heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamine. And whereas more than 1,300 people in King County died of overdose in 2023, and 630 people have died so far this year. And whereas addiction is a complex and treatable disease, a life of recovery is possible, but more access to life-saving treatment services is needed. And whereas first responders in Bellevue carry Narcan, an overdose-reversing medication that has saved lives, and the city of Bellevue currently hired its first opioid use disorder social worker. And whereas the city of Bellevue supports local, county, and state efforts related to education, prevention, treatment, and recovery support for substance abuse. Now therefore, I, Janice Zahn, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 30th, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day in Bellevue, and encourage community members to support education, awareness, and increase access to life-saving treatment options.
Thank you. And we have Ron Rude from the Medical Services, from Fire.
Ron Rude had to go homesick today.
Oh, okay. I was going to say.
I'm filling in for him, and currently the Medical Services Officer, and this is the on-duty battalion chief.
Welcome.
Good evening. Keith Allen, Battalion Chief here with Bellevue Fire, serving since 2002. And as noted, we have Brian Snyder, paramedic and our Medical Services Officer, serving since 2003, here with you. We have seen firsthand, oh, I guess first, thank you. Want to thank Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and the rest of Council for taking the time to spotlight this awareness for the opioid issue that we deal with on a daily basis. As firefighters and paramedics, we see these in the streets here in Bellevue. As much as that may seem, we are impervious here. It is a daily occurrence, and we see how impacting it is not only on individuals, but the families and also our community at large. Knowing how to prevent or turn an overdose is critical. We've been improving in that. We've been carrying Narcan for a number of years. We've expanded that, as you know, with our partners in public safety with police, and recently with CARES as well. And then, as you noted in the proclamation, recently added our first opioid outreach social worker, which is partnered with CARES in an effort to help not only the individual, but those families back and contributing positively here with our community. So again, thank you for the efforts today in raising the awareness out there for everybody to help us battle this crisis.
Yeah, I just want to second that. Like you said, I'm Brian Snyder, been with Bellevue over 21 years, and have personally seen it from a professional standpoint, over and over, from homeless to the well-off neighboring community of Issaquah. I personally know two people who've lost brothers to opioids in the last three months, very well-to-do entrenched families in the community, and the testing trips will be huge. Ideally, you'd like people to get off them, but if they can test them and be safe and get the help they need, that's a wonderful thing. So thank you.
Thank you so much. If you could stick around when we're done with the other proclamations, we'll come back for a picture?
Wonderful.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have Councilmember Nguyen-House reading the India Day proclamation, which is going to be accepted by Debby Duda Dash.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas on August 15th, 1947, India declared its sovereignty after two centuries of British rule. And whereas Bellevue celebrates and recognizing, and recognizes the historical significance of India's Independence Day, and the indomitable spirit, resilience, and sacrifices of its people through their journey to independence. And whereas Washington State and Bellevue have many cultural and economic ties to India, with hundreds of thousands of Indian-American community members contributing achievements in education, in healthcare, in technology, economic development, and much more. And whereas Indian-Americans are small business owners, entrepreneurs, and CEOs of many Washington companies, including Bellevue-based tech companies. These businesses provide valuable services, resources, and jobs to the people of the state. And whereas Indian-Americans reflect a multitude of diverse thoughts, cultures, and religious identities while seeking to build bridges across all communities. And whereas the U.S.-Indian consulate in Bellevue and Seattle will celebrate the 78th Independence Day of India on Thursday, August 15th, 2024, with a public event where all are welcome to attend at the event here at City Hall Plaza in Bellevue. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 15th, 2024, as India Day in Bellevue, as a symbol of the shared values of democracy, diversity, and inclusion.
I see. We also have Ann here to accept. Would you like to come up? Thank you, Councilmember.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of the Indian community, just as a longstanding member, living here for the last almost like 30 years, this is for the first time, a big celebration of India Day is going to take place. And Bellevue, living up to its name, is having us showing, showcasing the rich diversity of the Indian community for the very first time in the history of the state of Washington. On behalf of the Indian community in Bellevue and beyond, we extend our sincere appreciation for your proclamation of India Day. We owe a big one to the team of City of Bellevue, who worked with us shoulder to shoulder, making this a reality, a dream coming true. This recognition not only celebrates our rich cultural heritage, but also underscores the vibrant contributions of Indian-Americans to the fabric of this city and the greater Seattle. India Day serves as a bridge between cultures, fostering understanding, unity, and friendship. As we commemorate this special occasion, we express our gratitude, deep gratitude, for the warmth and inclusivity that Bellevue offers to all its residents. With this, I would like to introduce Mr. Somit Raju, the youngest diplomat I have ever seen. He belongs to the Indian Foreign Service, and before joining the Indian consulate in Seattle, he was, he started his career in Taiwan. So he knows and understands the cultural diversity of our rich Asian community at large. I will ask Council Raju to speak a few words on this occasion.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Deputy Mayor, and council members, firstly, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for the proclamation regarding the parade on August 15th, which also marks the 78th Independence Day India is celebrating, both at home and abroad. And we hope that this event will become a cherished annual event, where many people from all walks of life come together to celebrate the spirit of India. And I would also like to express, extend a warm invitation to all of you to please attend the event, grace the occasion, and celebrate it along with us, you as well as everybody sitting here. And once again, thank you, Bellevue City Council, for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Shall we do a picture with you first?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
All right. I have good and bad news. We need to take a 10-minute break here, because we're having some technical difficulties. We're not live-streaming our meeting. We need to fix that, so everybody out there can hear. So we'll take a break until quarter till, hopefully. Thank you. Okay, we are going to resume. Thank you for your patience. We are at approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have, oh, you know what? I'm going to let our deputy city clerk, Karen Roberts, explain to everybody what's going on here. I forgot to do that. Go ahead, Karen.
You bet. So I just want to reiterate what Mayor Robinson said earlier. We are experiencing some tough technical difficulties with our online streaming. There is apparently video available, but no audio. There will be a copy of the meeting available at some point tomorrow, with both audio and video on the city's website. We will also produce a set of minutes that will summarize the meeting that will be available as well.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to do oral communications next, and I have a new script, so forgive me as I read this to us all. So this is about attending and participating in the council meetings with oral communication or even outside of that. Individuals are not allowed to disrupt the meeting. This includes talking out of turn or without permission, interrupting or making sounds when somebody else is talking, or approaching council members or city employees who are staffing the meeting. If a person disrupts the meeting, I'll give a warning, I'll end that person's remaining comment time, or ask the person to leave the meeting for the rest of the session. And... And my personal request is that people express themselves without name-calling, taunting, or disparaging others. I believe that most people can speak to the public comment without doing that, but that is a request that we have. And so ask that we can all be civil and decent. Thank you very much. And so Karen, would you like to tell us who signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before I start calling names, I will go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. The total time for oral communications is not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in both of these categories to give preference to people who have not spoken to the council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking to items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and a maximum of three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, and with that, I will call our first speaker.
Please do not interrupt the meeting. That's a warning. Mr. Zimmerman, please do not interrupt. This is a warning. Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, would you please leave the meeting?
Why I need leave meeting?
Because you're disrupting the meeting, and I'm warning you.
Why you talk about how many people? Why she don't do it today?
Out you go.
Twenty-five people. No, I don't want leave meeting.
Yeah.
Why I need leave meeting? For what? So you cheat people?
Okay, so we have.
Don't touch me, this stuff up.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to help Mr. Zimmerman leave the meeting.
No, but you're crook. You know what this mean? Twenty-five people. Why she don't talking about this? You have only limit 30 minutes, 10 people for 12 years. No, Nazi pig. Look this, look this people. You understand what this mean? Why you treat them like a cockroaches? Huh? Knock it off. Yeah, you very smart. Yeah? Knock it off. Knock it off. You got this, Ross.
Mr. Zimmerman, you're done. Okay, so back to public comment. Go ahead, Karen. Continue what you were finishing.
Our first speaker this evening is Maria Frost.
So did you say we have three, four, and three, four against?
We currently have three speaking in support of item 10A Bike Bellevue, and, I'm sorry, two in support and three in opposition.
Two in support and three in opposition, okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. My name is Maria Frost, and I'm the Transportation Director at Kemper Development Company. We want to express our strong support for the Transportation Commission's Bike Bellevue recommendations, specifically the recommendation to remove Bell Red Road from consideration. This recommendation is the result of hours of discussion and hundreds of community letters from residents, workers, and business owners who oppose road diets. Their decision is also informed by analysis from Ulta and Fairham Peers that show, if you dig deep enough into the appendices, that road diets on Bell Red would make an already bad traffic situation worse, and that's without taking into account the multiple intersections along this very corridor that are expected to fail their MIP performance targets if the city reaches its growth goals. Despite the commission's informed recommendation, and despite your clear and reasonable direction last March that removing travel lanes should be a last resort, the staff memo indicates the project may be back on the table for further study anyway. It is not clear to me why or what can be accomplished by spending hundreds of thousands more tax dollars and perhaps millions more on implementing costly and unsafe bike lanes when there is broad community support and needed funding to complete Spring Boulevard. We strongly oppose additional study for these reasons. So as you engage in your study session today, please consider what has already been established. Bell Red is a major arterial connection for drivers, emergency responders, and freight carrying upwards of 24,000 trips on average per day. Implementing road diets and adding bike lanes on Bell Red Road, as Bike Bellevue recommends, would cost $8 million tax dollars to help achieve a hoped-for 0.1% increase in bicycle ridership. This is also the rapid and likely cheaper option. Expanding right-of-way to add bike lanes would likely cost much more, taking funding away from higher priority projects such as completing Spring Boulevard, which will achieve a safer and superior east-west connection. Between 2011 and 2022, 93% of bike crashes in just the Bike Bellevue corridors were at intersections and driveways. On Bell Red Road, five of six of those crashes were at intersections and driveways. Neither a road diet nor expansion of right-of-way to create a bike lane on this major arterial is likely to resolve this problem. If the city, contrary to everything we've heard and learned, pursues a test pilot or permanent road diet anyway, this will snarl traffic, frustrate residents and workers, and likely increase the number of serious and fatal injury crashes. This will not move the city closer to its Vision Zero goal, and we do not need another $300,000 study to tell us this. Again, please accept the Transportation Commission's recommendation, and do not expend any more time or taxpayer dollars on studies or trials for road diets that 70% of the community does not want nor would benefit from. Let's focus on Spring Boulevard and other bike connections for which there is strong community support. Thank you so much for all of your thoughtful work and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nicole Myers.
Hello, good evening. Greetings, Mayor Robinson and members of the city council. I wanted to express my appreciation to you tonight for setting up the process that has been allowing, in the last few months, the Transportation Commission and the rest of our community to look at the Bike Bellevue proposal piece by piece and choosing the path forward that makes sense for each individual location. While the Transportation Commission usually handles things at a very high level, I appreciate that they've been willing to listen and engage in a discussion that includes the details. They've taken the time to listen to the community, even if that means there are 50 people present in a single meeting, all of them get to speak. It really speaks to Bellevue's dedication to safe streets and Vision Zero, that we are taking a thoughtful approach, and Bike Bellevue only scratches the surface of our efforts. I hope that as a community, we'll bring this energy and focus to consider some of the other bike-related opportunities, which are already present in the TFP or perhaps should be added to the TFP. We know we need branching connections from both East Rail and East Link. We need north-south improvements to help cyclists reach their destinations in Bell Red from Spring Boulevard Northrup and the 520 Trail. Connectivity is very important, so I hope that we will continue to investigate the feasibility of the Spring Boulevard temporary connection. I'm glad that the Transportation Commission made the call to use cycling funds for implementation of projects like this, rather than more studies of segments that so many concerns have been raised about. And I also hope you will support efforts to make pedestrians safer. Bellevue's Vision Zero story map shows that there have been no cyclist serious injuries and no cyclist deaths on Bell Red Road between 2013 and 2022, but in that time, Bell Red Road has had two pedestrian fatalities and six pedestrians serious injuries. There was also a pedestrian serious injury incident in 2023 that affected two people, according to Wash.Data. In the Bell Red area, community members have expressed interest in a multipurpose path that would serve both the pedestrians and the slower cyclists who can't keep up with traffic. It's much more expensive than paint on the road, and it would take more time, but importantly, it can only happen with your leadership on a coordinated effort because it would affect so many parcels. I hope you can also consider negotiating a discounted bus fare when cyclists need to ride through an area that has not had safety upgrades. As a cyclist, continued improvements in Bellevue are very important to me, and I really appreciate the thoughtful approach and all your leadership in this area. It's so positive to see this deliberative process, and again, thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Benjamin Slivka.
Thank you very much. It's my first visit to your city council. That's fun. I was born here in Seattle, went off to school, came back in 1985, and bought a house in Clyde Hill in 1989. And I've been cycling around the area for three or four decades now. I've also cycled in seven other states and at least 15 other countries. I'm retired, so I have a little time to travel. So I have a lot of experience cycling in a lot of different environments, from rural China and rural India to downtown Hanoi. That's a crazy place to be on a bicycle with motorcycles and all sorts of other things. The idea that we should remove traffic lanes that have multiple purposes, as the speaker from Kemper mentioned, I think is a really silly idea. A bike lane's only going to be used by bicycles. It's a very small number of people, and at night and on rainy days, you know, no cars or trucks or buses can use those lanes. I've bicycled in downtown Seattle on Second Avenue. I don't know who else has done that. That is a dedicated bike lane. That is the scariest experience I have ever had, except for Costa Rica. And it's, you know, the comments about the intersections, those are really, really scary on these dedicated bike lanes. And, you know, we don't have any of these dedicated bike lanes, so drivers don't know what to do. You know, if you look at the traffic roundabouts, we've put traffic roundabouts in here, I still encounter drivers, you know, those have been there in some cases for 10 years, who don't know what to do in those kinds of things. So I think there's a lot of safety issues. I think there's a lot of cost issues, and I think the benefits are very modest compared to all the downsides. So I'll give you a few extra minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. So I heard three pro-Transportation Commission recommendations. Is that accurate?
So Mr. Slivka actually signed up in opposition?
It doesn't matter what they signed up with. It's okay. What I heard was, and I know, and we limit it to three, but I know there's far more people in the room who feel this way, so can I have everybody stand up just to show yourselves if you're pro-Transportation Commission recommendation?
Not removing, no diet.
Correct.
That is confusing.
Is it? The Transportation Commission recommendation was to shelve Bell Red Road.
To not, to not take off, take away.
If you want to put it that way. All right, good. I just wanted to give you a chance to show yourselves. All right, thank you. So now we'll take three in support of the staff recommendation, regardless of how they wrote it on the sign-up sheet.
So I'm just going to have to continue to call the names, though, because I don't know who stood up.
Oh, that's okay. But if you've already, we can't take any more speakers that support the Transportation Commission recommendation. So if your name is called and you're in that camp, you're going to have to let us know.
Our next speaker is Ann Coughlin.
Yeah, I actually did sign up in opposition, but I have some other things to say.
Sure. You just can't speak to that.
Okay. It was the main thing I had written, and it is very confusing.
I realize that.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Long time no see. I'm Ann Coughlin. I've lived here 29 years, happily. I participated in the Lake Hills Walk last month, and it was a wonderful opportunity to get to know new council members and the staff who keep our city running on a beautiful evening in a cordial atmosphere. I also watched the city budget meeting last Tuesday and was surprised at the number of people likely requesting exorbitant funds from you and ultimately from us. It's very easy to spend other people's money. There are several costly products, projects, like the Grand Connection and others, already in the works. I am asking you to pause this and not spend more money, and to immediately fund essential services, police, fire, roads. It's ridiculous that the Transportation Department needs to tax us somehow to repair the streets and roads we all use. They are an essential service. The other things do kind of concern Bike Bellevue, but I'd like to say you are, we are already being heavily taxed by King County, and it's a ridiculous thing is going to happen where they're going to tax us on things we don't have, on their estimation of our potential build-out of our property, and that is blatantly unfair. So we're already being taxed so much, so please, like, just hold it on the taxes. I mean, we're going to be up to 50%, 20%. Say you want Bellevue for all. I don't, I don't know. It's definitely not going to be for all. You know, if you keep going, and all these projects, the Grand, many of them are wonderful. You don't need 20 million to expand the thing, in my opinion. You're in charge. You're supposed to represent us. We're taxed to the max by King County, so please, please, just keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carl Vanderhook.
Carl, I'm going to just say that if you're pro-Transportation Commission recommendation, we've already had the three, and I'm sorry, it's really confusing.
I'm commenting on the staff memo on Bike Bellevue.
Right.
Opposed to the staff memo recommendation that's in the staff memo.
Which is.
Nothing to do with what the Transportation Commission considers.
Well, I'm not the only one who's confused.
Yeah, that's a slim definition.
Yeah, it's the memo in your package that you guys will be talking about. Staff has a new request of you, and that's what we're commenting on here today.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Dear Mayor Robinson and council members, my name is Carl Vanderhook with Vanderhook Corporation in Old Bellevue. I commend the work the council and transportation have done on Bike Bellevue. The Transportation Commission has given clear recommendation to this council, as has been requested. Corridors 1A, 6A, and B, 7 and 9 are recommended as Category 1 for rapid implementation, totaling $4.3 million. Therefore, the entire $4.5 million CIP budget authorized by this council for Bike Bellevue has been utilized based on the current recommendations. The staff memo states, "This is a recommendation to the Transportation Director in consideration of building out the entire bicycle-connected infrastructure. Complex planning is informed by the values of the community and empirical data. With this in mind, the Transportation Director in later phases of the bicycle network intends to conduct the studies necessary to have the right empirical data regarding Corridors 3, 4, and 5." This excerpt suggests that although the Transportation Commission recommended that the Bell Red corridors be categorized for removal from consideration under Bike Bellevue.
Mr. Vanderhook, are you pro-Transportation Commission recommendation?
I am commenting on this staff memo that was not brought in front of the Transportation Commission.
Right, but you're for the recommendation that Transportation Commission.
Yeah, but I can leave all that out. I could just talk about this one thing.
Go ahead.
Okay. So this excerpt suggests that the Transportation Commission recommended that Bell Red corridors be categorized for removal from consideration. Staff are instead going to look past that. Additionally, what qualifies as right empirical data? Empirical data can either be right or wrong. It's just data. The inference that it can be right suggests that the data they previously used was wrong. It also shows that the empirical data is being used to arrive at a predetermined outcome and therefore is subjective and not empirical data at all. For example, the city's studies showed that with the implementation of bike lanes on Bell Red, vehicle travel speed would be reduced from 14 miles an hour to 8 miles an hour, which represents a 40% reduction. However, the city's staff claimed that if all corridors were implemented, the resulting decrease in average speed would only be 0.2 miles per hour. They arrived at this erroneous conclusion by taking the average speed across all corridors, which misrepresents actual real impact to travel times. A recent Bellevue Chamber survey showed 70% of residents do not support repurposing vehicle lanes for bicycle lanes. That is empirical. The estimated cost of additional study for Bell Red that Kevin McDonald told the Transportation Commission was several hundred thousand dollars. The 520 Trail, Spring Boulevard, Light Rail, and the North Upway Corridors approved under Bike Bellevue all represent parallel equivalent routes that would avoid conflicts, increase safety, and avoid removal of critical vehicle capacity. To quote Kevin McDonald.
Mr. Vanderhook, your time's up.
Thank you. Kevin's quote, "From the perspective of."
Okay, so we can no longer have anybody speaking against the staff recommendation.
There's not two sides to any one thing.
Okay, who's up next?
Our next speaker is Todd Woosley.
I think he excused himself, but he might be back.
Our next speaker is Kelly Reefer.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Kelly Reefer. I'm the Executive Director of Move Redmond, and I'm here to comment with a bit of a critique on 10A regarding Bell Red Road. I want to start with a quote from Councilmember Jessica Forsyth from the City of Redmond. "Redmond followed Bellevue's lead in adopting Vision Zero, and last night, our council, Redmond City Council, held firm to that commitment and unanimously approved a covered bike lane on Bell Red Road, inclusive of the removal of a full lane of automobile traffic. We look forward to Bellevue joining us in leading the way for a safer and more accessible biking future benefiting both our communities, our businesses, and greater transportation infrastructure," ends quote. "At Move Redmond, we know that our communities between Bellevue and Redmond are intimately connected. We have people commuting across the border in." We have people commuting across the border in Overlake every single day, not even noticing when they go between Bellevue and Redmond. We also are really aware that it's really important to look at data. And when we make data-driven decisions, we actually know what makes Vision Zero a reality. And the reality is building safe infrastructure that reduces speeds. Yes, this might slow you down and actually have people drive the speed limit on Bell Red Road. What we really need is to ensure that people have accessibility to all of the investments that we made on the east side, from the two-line light rail to the east trail. People need access. And Bell Red Road is a unique road, and it is not a parallel route to take the 520 Trail if you're biking along Bell Red Road to get to a destination that is Bell Red Road. You need a direct, safe, accessible route. And finally, I want to just say, if you build it, they will come. We can look to Paris here. Prior to the Olympics, the Velo Plan built 30 kilometers of bike lanes prior to the Olympics. And now they have seen an incredible mode shift where the majority of people in the city center of Paris are bicycling for transportation. They built it, and people came, and they have mitigated huge congestion challenges for the Olympics. You can look at the streets right now. They're not clogged with cars. People are able to make the events on time. And if I can remind you all, the FIFA World Cup is just around the corner. This is a huge opportunity for our region to invest in accessibility, in mobility, and move towards a future that is inclusive, it is safe, and accessible for so many people. And finally, one note. Wheelchair, power wheelchair users love protected bike lanes. They're not only bike lanes are used by people who bike, they're also used by people who take wheelchairs, scooters, and mobility aids. So just one other final note, but thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
So that is our sixth person to speak regarding Bike Bellevue.
So I will take two more in favor of the staff recommendation.
Our next speaker on the list is Christopher Randles.
I think the difficult framing around this is that we have two parties that are kind of on opposite, oppositional sides of staff's recommendation. I think that's maybe the confusion. So I'm not speaking in support of staff's recommendation. I'm speaking opposed to staff's recommendation from the other side. Is that still allowed by this council?
Well, I've kind of, here's where I'm at, and we can figure this out together because this is complicated for all of us.
Understood.
We have a staff recommendation. We have a Transportation Commission recommendation. We've heard those who support the Transportation Commission recommendation. We've heard one person who speaks in support of staff recommendation. And so if you are neither of those...
I would just say my opinion is opposed to both.
We'll put you in the hybrid department, so you can be the first one in that.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, council members and staff. Chris Randles with Complete Streets Bellevue. Starting off by thanking you all for the productive budget discussion. That was just several weeks ago. In particular, I do want to thank you, Mayor Robinson, for your direction to staff to explore the community's requests to expand funding for the rapid implementation of Vision Zero infrastructure. As a city, we've repeatedly affirmed our commitment to eliminating deaths and serious injuries on our streets by 2030, but fulfillment of that attainable goal will require tangible action that starts in the city's budget, and we feel that we're moving in a good direction on that path. However, it will also require leadership and action on topics like the one that's before you tonight. Your body launched work on Bike Bellevue nearly a year and a half ago under the shared values of safety, connectivity, sustainability, equity, and many others. But I personally think that Bike Bellevue as a name undersells the true scope and importance of this project because it limits us to just talking about the benefits that these improvements would have for people on two wheels rather than the comprehensive safety benefits that would be gained by everybody. Bike Bellevue is, and always has been, a Vision Zero project. It is about the rapid and cost-effective implementation of best-practice safety infrastructure to calm traffic, reduce vehicle speeds, shorten crossing distances, and improve safety for everyone, all while also creating better facilities for people on two wheels. The streets for Bike Bellevue were explicitly chosen, not just because of their ability to fulfill gaps in Bellevue's bike network, but also because they represent some of Bellevue's most dangerous streets, the ones that are in most need of urgent action to change the tide. On the segment of Bell Red Road under review for Bike Bellevue, as has been alluded to tonight, 14 people have been seriously injured or killed in the last 10 years alone, including eight pedestrians and six people in cars. On the relevant segment of North Upway, four people have been killed or seriously injured, including one pedestrian, one cyclist, and two people in cars. This may sound productive or obvious, but improving safety on these streets will require improvements on these streets. We do not solve the issue of safety on Bell Red Road by creating facilities elsewhere, especially when there are apartments, businesses, and community assets that people will want to access on Bell Red Road no matter their mode of travel. Off-street paths don't just take more money and more time to implement, they also do not address the street conditions that lead to speeding, low visibility, and danger for everybody, not just people walking, biking, and rolling, but drivers too. Bike Bellevue, the original proposal for rapid build on-street bicycle infrastructure, does. Please carefully review the Transportation Commission's recommendations and judge whether they meet the original intent of this project for rapid implementation of Vision Zero infrastructure and whether they put us on a path towards our safety goals in just six years' time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Valentina Veniva.
Okay, so I have handouts. I guess you already have. I don't know.
Oh, yes, we do. We do have this.
Okay. Good evening, council members. At the last Transportation Commission meeting, before taking a final vote on removing Bell Red segments from Bike Bellevue completely, commissioners acknowledged that they don't even know why Bell Red Road is important for cyclists and why cyclists go there in spite of lack of infrastructure. Instead of trying to learn why that is the case, they left the question unanswered and proceeded to remove Bell Red Road completely from Bike Bellevue. The handout you see is an attempt to answer this question, and to be short, Bell Red Road, while being probably the most comfortable and accessible way to commute between downtown on one hand and crossroads over Lake and Lyle Hills on the other, is also a street where multiple locally important businesses and amenities are found: grocery stores, the YMCA in its gym, a community center and a park, cafes and meeting places. There is also a middle school. And of course, there are people who simply live or work there. People are already there, both biking and rolling on scooters, and if you follow the links at the end of the handout, you can see more of them. And it is the city's duty to give them a way to do it safely and comfortably, which means dedicated infrastructure. And so if the city is serious about its street safety goals, its commitments to reduce both emissions and traffic, and its stated goal of improving transportation for everyone and not just drivers, the commission's decision cannot be accepted by the council. And as you've heard, Redmond has already started on their part of Bell Red Road, started work to turn it, started planning, and they plan to finish at the end of next year, converting to protected bike lanes. And it seems like it's just another part of the push to modernize streets, near and leading to light rail stations. And living in crossroads, I go there often, and it's great. I wish Bellevue could be as great. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have room for one more pro-staff recommendation.
Our next speaker is Mike Nykrim.
So I was on the flip side of this line in respect to the issue at hand, like here some of the others.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Our next speaker is Robert Killian.
Okay. So that sounds like that's all signed up. We have signed up to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. So then we have some other topics people signed up for.
So actually, we have a couple more that have also signed up for Bike Bellevue. The next speaker would be Pamela Johnston.
She has sign code amendment. I show the sign code amendment for her.
Okay, our next speaker then is Mark M.
Mark M. I don't have that down.
The final one that signed up for Bike Bellevue is Kate Sayers.
I don't want road diets, and I would really like the City of Redmond to go to their meetings and others.
So we have, what I have is Dr. Harland next from the Issaquah School District.
So we've actually got T-Mobile here to speak for recognition.
I'm so sorry, Ken Lyons from T-Mobile.
So our next three speakers are Ken Lyons, Holly Camp, and Jody Alberts.
Okay.
Are we done with the bike stuff?
Yes. Well, if there's one more in support of staff, but I don't think so. So I think we're done with that. Thank you. And may I just give the pro-staff people, if anybody else is here, a chance to stand up? No? Okay, perfect.
Good evening, ma'am. Whoa, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor Malakutian and council members. We are here tonight to express our appreciation to you, the city's leadership and staff for your support of T-Mobile and for the investments you have made to create and improve the process for installing 5G improvements throughout the city of Bellevue. With me tonight is, we have Holly Camp from T-Mobile. She's the Senior Development Manager. And then, of course, we have Jody Alberts here from, here with the Bellevue Chamber. We also have Rich Fenton, who is here on behalf of Exonet, who is T-Mobile's build partner that helped build these improvements. Last month, tens of thousands of residents and visitors attending the Bellevue family fourth event at Downtown Park and would have experienced lightning-fast wireless connections enabled by T-Mobile's new 5G small wireless facilities. They're on the light poles that go around the perimeter of the park. 5G allows for much better connectivity overall, fostering economic development, improving emergency communications for public safety, and reducing the digital divide. The launch of five small wireless facilities around the perimeter of the park the week prior to the event was a significant milestone and marked the culmination of over a year of close collaboration and partnership with the city, T-Mobile, Exonet, which is again T-Mobile's build partner, and the Bellevue Chamber. The improvements to Downtown Park would not have been possible without the leadership of the city council and the city manager's office, the Transportation Department, and all of the city's review and inspection staff. Transportation, led by Andrew Singalakis and Mark Poe, recently established the Franchise Utility Office, a new office that's headed by Cassie Davis, to work closely with T-Mobile on its initial batch of 5G facilities. And they're here tonight in the audience. Cassie and her review team were instrumental in addressing issues that hindered the construction of these facilities and made several improvements to speed up the review of small wireless facilities. The city's overhaul of the review process has reduced the average review time from several months down to less than 60 days. This means that T-Mobile can move quickly to make network improvements as demand for next-generation wireless facilities continues to grow. We also want to recognize the significant contributions and support of the right-of-way inspections teams, and the signals and lighting team, and the traffic engineering team, and the parks department. And I'll turn it over to Holly to say a few words as well.
Thanks, Ken. Well, good evening. With nearly 5,000 employees at our headquarters in Factoria, as the number-one wireless provider in the market, Bellevue is critical to T-Mobile's success. We deeply appreciate all the dedication of the city's leadership and staff to make the 5G improvements downtown, in the Downtown Park, a reality recently.
I'm going to just stop you for a minute because, Karen, we should have started her again, give you your own three minutes.
Oh, thank you. But more importantly, we appreciate the city's efforts to align its resources to develop standards and an effective review process to unlock current and future investment in the wireless network that will provide tremendous ongoing benefits to the city's residents, businesses, and first responders. The improvements around Downtown Park are just the beginning. T-Mobile has planned many other 5G improvements as part of the commitment to provide a world-class wireless experience to its customers right here in Bellevue, which is T-Mobile's hometown. The city's willingness to work closely with us is deeply appreciated, and this is a great example of what we can accomplish when we work together. So again, we say thank you.
Thank you. You can get your own three minutes here.
Thank you. I know that you all have a lot on your plate, and so it's nice to hear the things that the city is doing well and has gotten really right. And this has certainly been several years in the making. I've testified previously on the work the Chamber has done with the 5G Subcommittee, which is where a lot of this work stemmed from. And the whole purpose of that Subcommittee was creating efficiencies within the purbing and review process to get these small wireless facilities up in Bellevue. And it's exactly why we have 5G here in Bellevue today. While there was a fair amount to address initially, I can confidently say that it was one of the most collaborative, respectful, and productive groups I've had the pleasure of working with. And this recent instance that Ken highlighted by our friends at T-Mobile demonstrates that not only were there improvements during the time that the committee was delving into some of these concerns, but the lessons that were learned have been fully integrated into the process of the city and how the city engages with industry as well. Success stories like the signal that Bellevue is open for business and that it supports the continued growth in operations for its employers. By fostering these types of relationships and adopting a solutions-oriented mentality, we can continue to strengthen Bellevue as a bustling job center, grow its economy, and overall make our city a better place than when we started. So thank you again for all that helped, in particular, the Transportation Department and the council as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you. Our final two speakers on the list are Dr. Harland Gallenger and Superintendent Heather
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor, council members. My name's Harland Gallenger, and I am current president of the Issaquah School Board. I wanted to share with you a bit about our district. We have 19,000 students and families, cover 110 square miles, five municipalities, including the city of Bellevue, of which we have two elementary schools that are within your city limits. It encompasses about 1,300 students, approaches 10% of your public school children in your city. We are running a 2024 school bond in November.
Oh, may I stop you? We can't do any, that's considered campaigning to talk about that here at the meeting?
We were told information was fine.
Let me let our attorney weigh in, okay? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. They are able to speak so long as they keep it to informational, factual only.
All right, I'm fine with it. I'm just giving conflicting information here, so, okay, go ahead.
So this is born out of a process of eight meetings, more than 60 community members to bring forth the priorities of our communities collectively across our school district. The $642.3 million bond is focused on modernization and energy efficiency across every one of our 26 school sites, focused on safety and security, increasing high school capacity, particularly focused on building a fourth comprehensive high school in our school district. We continue to have record high school enrollment in spite of all of the challenges coming out of the pandemic. In this coming school year, we're going to have even 70 more students than our previous record enrollment last year. This high school number four is necessary for our severe overcrowding at our Issaquah and Skyline High Schools. It's $182 million dedicated towards that project, which represents about 25% of the bond package. This need was identified when we had 5,200 high school students, and now we're going to have more than 5,700 high school students in this coming year. Our ask tonight is that we would like to have the opportunity to formally present on your agenda and to have the council be able to consider whether or not you would want to take a position on our 2024 bond.
Good evening. I don't know if I'm the, thank you. I'm the superintendent of Issaquah School District, and I get to have the pleasure of working with Director and Dr. Gallenger. My name is Heather Towick, and I've been in the role for the past two years. And tonight, I'm just pleased to make my introduction to you formally and let you know a little bit about myself. I originally hail from Providence, Rhode Island, where I grew up as an only child to a single mom and had a larger family network of many Chinese aunties and uncles and grandparents and extended family members. As a fifth-generation resident in that city of Providence where I did grow up, I got to see the hard work of my family through five generations and the efforts to help access employment, citizenship, and housing. And so the role of public service, and thank you for all of your service to the city of Bellevue, was deeply ingrained to me very early on, even though it was an informal network of Chinese immigrants who had recently come to that city. I relocated here in 2016 with my husband. We have a young son and proud to be able to send him to the school district of Issaquah. And I've always believed... to send him to the school district of Issaquah. And I've always believed through the model of my family and education. My mom was a teacher. I started my career also as a teacher. We've seen how education can fundamentally alter and provide opportunities for our youth. And so our youth in the Issaquah School District that are Bellevue residents, we have over 1,300 students who are Bellevue residents. And so I believe strongly that our young people and through education are the backbone to our healthy communities, our healthy democracy, a healthy economy, and healthy community overall. So just wanted to share a little bit about myself and pleased to make your, my introduction to you tonight on a more formal manner.
Great. Thank you so much for coming down. We appreciate it. We'll get back to you about whether to make that an agenda item.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And that brings us to the end of oral communications.
We've had one hybrid bike person. Do we have two more hybrids, not for Transportation Commission, not for staff recommendation? Just want to talk about the, whatever you want to talk about. Okay, I'm not seeing it. Oh, so Pamela, you are signed up to talk about the Sign Code Amendment. Let's, let's have you come on up.
So Pamela Johnson, I'm here to talk about the Sign Code Amendment. I remember Mayor Chalmanac talking about, oh, look at all the signs that they had in some other city. And they were so amazed that we didn't have big billboards and everything flashing everywhere. And so I also want to look at it from a neighborhood perspective. There's a lot of growth happening in this city. And in that growth, we have to learn how to share the space that is the public space. And part of that is your view out your window and stuff like that. So signs are there to inform us. I feel that it's a very important process to the democracy of our city. So I would say do not put businesses separated from organizations separated from people because that's not teaching people the pros and cons of everybody's needs. There's different kinds of signs. In Reed, they talked about whether, what the sign was about and what it was not about. But there are signs that are really temporary signs, like join this camp. And there's not enough knowledge around here. So I actually took a sign that was falling over and took it to the pro club before and said, hey, here's your sign that was falling over into the street. And they said, oh, doesn't the city deal with that themselves? So that's one thing I would like to look at, is as we do this process, to look at an FAQ for what we want to end up with. So there's other signs that happen, like the Bellevue Technology Center, the community put up signs along the right-of-way. And the property owner, who it was about that property owner, there was a community meeting about that property, they took them down. And that doesn't show good using each other and also sharing the space. Over 90 signs about Bike Bellevue were taken down. You're lucky if you got to see one. But that's my, my information, that they were put sometimes with other signs, but only the Bike Bellevue ones were taken away. So let's talk about how we inform, but also share the environment. We need to make sure that this is also safety involved. So those signs that are on the side of the road can be really hindering traffic. And sometimes, like depending upon how we're doing our new infrastructure, like in Bell Red, there's different ways than we have now. So let's make sure we're looking at the new, new ways that the, the sidewalks are built on and all the features. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one person, I don't see her here, though, who's signed up. Betsy Hummer? Is she here? I don't see her. Okay, all right. So I think we're done with oral communications. I think our time has probably run out. Is that true? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we have two study session items tonight. City Manager, would you like to introduce the first one?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members. So tonight, we have an informational presentation regarding the Transportation Commission's work to categorize the 11 bike corridors in Bike Bellevue. And that is in alignment with the Council's direction earlier this spring. And I will say the Commission has made excellent progress, and they're nearly done. I want to thank the Commission for their work. It's been diligent, and they've given great consideration to the corridors. And as the Council is also aware, there's, continues to be very, very strong interest from the community about bicycle facilities and infrastructure throughout the city and not just in the Bellevue, Bike Bellevue corridors. So to ensure that we are keeping the Council and the community informed, the study session tonight is to provide an overview of the Commission recommendations to Director Singalakis on the nine of the 11 corridors, and also for Director Singalakis to share his decision to maintain the department's recommendation on the Bell Red Corridor. And that decision would place the Bell Red Corridor into the Category 5, which moves it to the transportation facilities planning process. And that would allow potential study of options for bicycle network connections on the corridor. So here to share more detail, we have Vice Chair Drew McGill from the Transportation Commission. And from the Transportation Department, we have Andrew Singalakis, our director, and Kevin McDonald, our principal planner. And with that, I will hand it over to Director Singalakis.
Well, thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, council members. And I'd also like to call out Jared Nguyen-House, council member, who's the liaison with the Transportation Commission. Tonight, the Transportation Commission, Drew McGill, Vice Chair, and Project Manager, Kevin McDonald, will describe the progress. The Commission has already made toward meeting the March council direction on Bike Bellevue corridors. No action is required of the Council tonight, but we will welcome your comments at the end of the presentation. As you know, the Transportation Commission is an advisory body to the City Council and also to the Transportation Department. They've done a great job at being very deliberate and methodical, considering the vast amount of input they've received on the project. We'll be reviewing their recommendation to me as the Transportation Director at tonight's study session. And I should note that the Commission has, by and large, taken the staff recommendations that have been provided, with the exception of the Bell Red Corridors, the three different ones, which they recommended a category not for further recommendation. My inclination is to accept the staff recommendation and refer those corridors to the transportation facilities plan. Should be on slide three. I've asked Council Chair McGill to review the Bike Bellevue map at the, in the direction received from the Council. Kevin will then describe the Transportation Commission's recommendation and next steps. And I'll wrap it up with a preview of the upcoming planning to implement more of the bicycle network beyond Bike Bellevue. Bike Bellevue is a subset of the overall universe of bicycle and pedestrian planning here in the city. And now I'm going to turn it over to Vice Chair McGill.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and thank you for the opportunity tonight, Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor Malakutian and Council. I just want to also acknowledge the hard work and professionalism and commitment that we've seen from the staff as we've been working through the Bike Bellevue and the transportation team that we've been working through together. I also want to acknowledge the outstanding engagement of our city's residents, workers, and business owners throughout the process. Their commitment and engagement, I believe, is why we have such a great city. So we've had quite a bit of engagement there. Just as a backgrounder, I think you all know this, but Bike Bellevue envisions the implementation of low-cost, rapid-build bicycle network facilities on existing streets in downtown Wilburton and Bell Red, as shown on this map up here.
Could we turn up their volume a bit?
I can probably speak a little closer. Is that better? Okay. Okay, so back to, you can see the map up there, and those are the Bike Bellevue corridors that we've been working on. And Council initiated this program back in March of 2023, just as a reminder, and allocated a total of $4.5 million for funding to this project. Staff prepared preliminary design concepts for 11 candidate Bike Bellevue corridors that you see up on the map. Nine of those corridors originally required the repurposing of travel lanes to accomplish the corridor improvements. Since then, staff and the Commission worked together to meet the goals of Bike Bellevue without removing travel lanes, which we will get to in a moment. Community response to Bike Bellevue has been strong, and frankly, it's been polarized at times. People expressed widespread support for more bicycle facilities and to improve access and safety. And we heard strong opposition to converting travel lanes to bike facilities from residents and businesses, including from many who support bike infrastructure overall. We reviewed close to 1,000 comments so far. Next slide, please. In March this year, the Council provided direction to the Transportation Commission to look at each of the 11 Bike Bellevue corridors and gave us seven categories to use. Some of the categories, you see three on here, but Category 2 and 3 apply to all of the corridors. Likewise, on this slide, Category 4 applies to all the corridors. So for, so far, the Commission worked through nine of the 11 Bike Bellevue corridors and ended up using all of the remaining categories that you provided for us to use to make a recommendation to the direction, the Director. A little bit about the process, next, next slide. At each Commission meeting, we reviewed and heard public comment. We extended sessions several times as needed so everybody could be heard. Again, thank you to the engaged community here in Bellevue for bringing your comments forward and making them explicit in our meetings. And staff reviewed the Bike Bellevue draft design concept, described any project defined in the pedestrian and bicycle transportation plan, identified the performance target for the corridor and mobility implementation plan, took us on a virtual tour of several of the corridors, and provided the recommendation to the Commission. The Commission then took the opportunity to ask questions of staff and discuss, debated, and with mutually agreed changes, approved staff recommendations. As you can see, five of the corridors are accomplished without the repurpose of a travel lane. One will depend on further study, and three more were recommended for removal from further study by the Commission, although not by the staff. Those three corridors are on the three-mile stretch of Bell Red Road between Northeast 12th and Spring Boulevard and 156 Northeast. The Commission recommended by majority vote that these three corridors be placed in Category 6. We might want to go back to Category 6, just so you can see on that slide what Category 6 is. Oh, I think it might, there it is. Whoops. Just so you guys are all familiar with Category 6. We provided the rationale based on safety to cyclists and maintaining vehicle capacity. We talked about the uniquely, the unique complexity and cost of further study on the Bell Red Road and about using study resources for other corridors and toward completing the missing segment of Spring Boulevard. Starting at slide eight, Kevin will review the corridors in more detail, and then we're here for Q and A.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair McGill. I'd like to take you on a quick tour of the Transportation Commission's recommendation on nine of the 11 Bike Bellevue corridors. And they, they got to work quickly after the Council provided its direction on March 25th with the first set of recommendations to the Director at their study session on April 11th. At that study session, the Commission recommended to move forward with final design and implementation of three Bike Bellevue corridors, the Redmond Corridor, the Wilburton Corridor, sorry, a small segment of Lake Washington Boulevard, and a segment of Northeast Second Street between Bellevue Way and 112th. Final design is imminent on these corridors, and we expect to move forward to development in 2025. At the next study session in May, staff brought forward one more segment of the Northeast First, Second Corridor, the segment between 100th and Bellevue Way, where the Commission recommended to provide bike facilities in the way of sharos, shared lane markings, implement some traffic calming measures to keep bicycles and pedestrians safe along that corridor, introduce some wayfinding to provide direction to the bike riders. There's a recommendation to reduce the speed limit on that corridor and to evaluate the outcome of the implementation when it occurs. The reason the Commission recommended to proceed along this category is to retain the vehicle capacity along the corridor and to maintain existing and planned access to driveways. Then in June, the Commission looked at Northeast 12th. The Bike Bellevue recommendation was to repurpose a travel lane, and the Commission instead recommended to install a multipurpose path on the backside of the curb between 108th on the east and 100th Avenue on the west, providing a continuous multipurpose path on the north side of the city all the way across the city from 100th to 112th. And that, that corridor is already under design. It's funded separately from Bike Bellevue, and it can be implemented in coordination with private sector development that's occurring at the intersection of 102nd and Northeast 12th. So because it is coordinated with, with private sector, some of the timing of implementation may be variable, depending on when the private sector project comes online. And in July, we, we took three corridors to the Commission for their recommendation. One of them was North Upway Corridor, recognizing during the discussion that there were three segments of Corridor 1, North Upway, that merited a different recommendation. Segment A is between 120th and 124th, where there are already existing bike lanes. And there's two lanes of traffic in each direction and a center turn lane. And we believe that there's enough space within the existing curbs to narrow the travel lanes enough so that you could install a buffered bike lane in that segment between 120th and 124th, providing a little bit more protection to the bicyclist riding on that section. In Segment B, which is between 124th and 136th, bicycle facilities are being implemented now as back-of-curb infrastructure in coordination with private sector development. And the Washington State Department of Transportation is also proposing back-of-curb bicycle facilities in connection with their connection to 520 at 124th. That's planned to provide access to and from the east. So the Commission's recommendation in this segment was to proceed with the cadence of implementation, incremental as it is, as, as development occurs along that segment to achieve the bicycle network on that segment. And then on the very short segment between 136th and 140th, the Commission recommends studying options to achieve level of traffic stress 1 on this corridor, which is part of a priority bicycle corridor that stretches from 140th along Spring Boulevard into downtown Bellevue. Also on July 11th, the Commission considered staff recommendation on 140th Avenue Northeast. There's currently bike lanes and sharo lane markings along this section, and the Commission recommended to freshen those up a little bit, provide nice, bright lane markings, and also to provide some wayfinding to provide messaging to both the bicycle riders and vehicle drivers that this is a bike corridor. They would like to refer this corridor to the transportation facilities plan for further design to consider options that, that can help achieve level of traffic stress 1 along this priority bike corridor. And also, the Commission recommends looking at a segment between 140th and Spring Boulevard to provide a connection between those two corridors. And on July 11th, Bell Red Road was on, on the table. The staff, as you know, recommended to refer this corridor to the transportation facilities plan for further study to determine how, to determine options. Plan for further study to determine how, to determine options for implementing bike facilities along this corridor. That the commission recommended that this corridor no longer be considered for reasons that the vice chair mentioned, safety concerns for bicyclists at intersections and driveways along this corridor, and to retain vehicle capacity, as has been noted. Turn it over to Andrew for just a bit to explain the staff recommendation.
Choosing to move Bell Red into the TFP, want to make it pretty clear that what we're talking about, in addition to taking a look at different alternatives that we'll look at right away, acquisition, environmental constraints, costs, all those things, we're also going to be considering the original Bike Bellevue recommendations as a comparison point, and then select an alternative. And when we get to that point, we'll be coming back to the council with it.
All right, so we're almost at the end of the Bike Bellevue categorization. There's two more corridors that staff will take a recommendation to the Transportation Commission. One of those corridors is Corridor Eight, which is 100th Avenue Northeast, it's kind of on the backside of Bellevue Square between Northeast Eighth and Northeast Fourth. And the other corridor to be resolved is a short segment of 116th, just north of Northeast 12th, that could provide a bike connection between the facilities on Northeast 12th and the bike lanes that exists further north on 116th, all the way to North Upway.
So thank you, Drew and Kevin, and we are, as stated, moving forward the design of the first four quarters that you saw tonight, and the plan is to try to implement those in 2025. And as Kevin stated, the work is going on for the ongoing design for the Northeast 12th Street multi-use path. And after that point, and after the next Transportation Commission meeting, we will have looked at all 11 Bike Bellevue corridors to see what aspects could be considered to be rapid implementation, which may need to be studied and which will need to be studied in the TFP. The TFP is the city's longer-range transportation planning document, 12-year look to build transportation projects for all mode. The Transportation Commission is going to be taking up this work in September. And finally, one thing that we are planning on doing is updating the mobility implementation plan. We've gotten an awful lot of feedback from the public. Be a good idea to get more of that feedback, put it together, and implement it through the MIP for a listing of projects that could potentially be used for bike connectivity. And again, I really want to thank the Transportation Commission for their hard work. It's been a pretty long process to date, but they've done a really good job at, you know, being a steward for your recommendations moving forward. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do you want our feedback on corridors eight and 10 while we're here tonight?
If that's what you wish.
All right, so that's within. So Vice Chair McDonald, I want to thank you for being here tonight and for all the work that you've done on the Transportation Commission. We appreciate it. Councilmember Newenhouse, you are the liaison for transportation. I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the great presentation tonight. We're certainly blessed to have such an outstanding transportation staff here in our city, led by Mr. Director Andrew Singalakis. Vice Chair McGill, outstanding work by the entire commission. As you noted, there were a lot of feedback, a lot of data, but it's a real pleasure being the liaison to the Transportation Commission and seeing the thoughtful, hard work of a lot of dedicated volunteers who, you know, make really complex and sometimes controversial decisions, even if it's not intended to be. It can be to some, and I applaud their dedication and commitment to the city, so thank you. You know, I do find it a little disappointing that these volunteers sometimes are subjected to sometimes, you know, kind of extreme rhetoric, I would say. I would ask that, just as we do, as the mayor points out before oral communications, I think most of us can get across our thoughts on any one topic or policy without name-calling or using other, shall we say, colorful language, because as you mentioned, Vice Chair McGill, the vast majority want great bike infrastructure in this city, including me. We just have some difference of opinion in terms of different corridors and routes that might be, that might be used. So while I appreciate everybody's passion for this issue, you know, I don't think there's any excuse for attacking commissioners at times, because at the end of the day, these are your neighbors. This is our community. So I always ask that people kind of keep that in mind going forward as we continue this great work. So having said that, I want to thank just the hundreds of emails and letters from residents, from stakeholders, businesses, certainly different groups as well, such as East Side Urbanism and others that have been part of this process from the very get-go. So I really appreciated all of the different things that we've heard, the different opinions. It's been critical for us to kind of get to this point. And it was great that we noted at the start of this, the department has several programs, several projects designed to address bicycle and pedestrian mobility. I think these projects address bicycle pedestrian concerns across the city. I mean, yes, we're focused on Bike Bellevue, but you know, there's a larger plan here for sure across the city, and will be instrumental in aligning the city's Vision Zero goals, as mentioned earlier, by prioritizing road safety. There's a lot of bike infrastructure goals, and I look forward to meeting them, not only as a council member, but as a cyclist myself. Really excited about these world-class bike facilities that we will be creating in our One note I do want to make, I think going forward, when we have topics like this, I think we need this to be a little bit more clear, though. When we look at this, and it just says summary of Transportation Commission recommendations, when I see that, or Andrew, as you mentioned in your comments at the beginning of this, that you're making a recommendation about a controversial corridor, I think we need to have that right in the title there. So because no one is here because of all the other recommendations that have been, that staff recommended and the commission concurred, they're here about Bell Red. So I think going forward, we need to be very clear about what's going to be discussed and what's going to be recommended tonight. So just to share that piece of information. Now, in the recent meeting, the commission did take, or did not, sorry, did not take the staff recommendation regarding Bell Red Road, and I'm just going to focus on that because Kevin did a great job mentioning all the other corridors that have all been approved, or started in all these shovel-ready projects. It's fantastic. So I'm just going to focus on that. Now, the staff recommended that the Bell Red segments be referred to the TFP, and as you mentioned there, Andrew, for further analysis for a major capital project. And the commission voted not to pursue this option and not to further consider bike lanes on this corridor. So as you know, Bell Red is a major arterial, and I think that played into that decision and that vote. And it's the area's most heavily-used road connecting West Bellevue to East Bellevue. And given the anticipated growth of Bell Red, the growth of Wilburton, the Spring District, preserving the Bell Red corridor for car traffic is essential to accommodate the increased congestion. In fact, and I think one of our commenters during the oral communications had mentioned that the study that we paid for by those transportation consultants, their analysis and data showed that any road diet, a reduction of lanes on Bell Red, and I'm quoting directly from the report as I understood it, any reduction of lanes on Bell Road that would make already a bad traffic situation worse, and that's without considering the already planned density in the area. So again, Bell Red is already feeling very much congested and would only dramatically get so if we removed a vehicular lane and added a bike lane. So for example, and again, I think this data point might have been shared earlier, on Bell Red Road, those consultants also said that after their study showed that traffic speeds with the implementation of bike lanes would reduce vehicle travel speeds from 14 to eight during peak hour, and that represents a 40% reduction in speed. That's concerning when we have so many people, commercial residents, first responders, et cetera, that really count on Bell Red for their livelihood, for picking up their daughter after school, for getting to work, et cetera. And it's my thought, but also the commission's just really felt that the 520 Trail, Spring Boulevard, and the North Upway Corridor sections approved under Bike Bellevue, that all those represent a parallel equivalent routes to Bell Red. And that would avoid conflicts, it would increase safety, and avoid removal of critical capacity, specifically vehicle capacity. And Kevin, if I remember correctly, even in one of the meetings, in fact, I think it was the July meeting, you said, and I had to go back and read to make sure I got your quote correct, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but even Kevin, you mentioned that from the perspective of providing the best long-term connection, I would put all my eggs in the Spring Boulevard basket. And I couldn't agree with you more. So I'm in favor of the Transportation Commission's recommendations, which include designated corridors three, four, and five as category six and eliminating Bell Red Road from further study. Again, rather than spending more funds on additional studies, additional analysis, I would rather put that money towards the completion of Spring Boulevard, which includes protected bike lanes and wide sidewalks. And those sidewalks, and I appreciate the comments earlier today, sometimes are overlooked and they're badly needed, badly needed. So the decision, I believe enhances, that decision by the commission enhances safety for all road users and provides a direct connection between the Spring District and Bell Red Station as well. So two questions I have for you before I turn it over to my next colleague, but the paragraph within or under July 11th, Andrew, regarding your recommendation, and it sounds like it's a recommendation that you have decided you already want to move forward with. So my question to you is, we've done a study on this once already. If we do another study for further analysis, can you get a little bit into the weeds of how this study will be different, what you'll be looking for, and how much it's going to cost in order to conduct that study? And then also, as which was mentioned by Mr. Vanderhook, the data. It was a bit curious that you kind of broke it up like the right data and wrong data. I'm not sure if you actually wrote this piece in the memo, but there was right and wrong data. So I'm not sure quite what that means. There's data, and I guess how you interpret it could be considered right or wrong, depending on your perspective on this issue, but that's my one question. I'll have a follow-up question to that after that.
I would, taking a look in addition to what we already have done, and we looked at repurposing travel lanes for Bell Red Road, that's already, that's part of the equation. But in my mind, taking a look at the TFP project that would go into Bell Red Road would end up being more of an acquisition, a widening of the roadway to accommodate the bicycle lanes as opposed to repurposing the travel lanes. What that looks like, what segments that would include, we wouldn't know that until we're getting into the analysis itself, but that is pretty much what it means for, also for providing a longer-term goal, too, of using the development review process to acquire some of that right away. And we haven't costed it out yet. We don't know how much that would cost.
Okay.
It depends on how detailed it would end up being in terms of engineering.
Is that something that we can take a look at just quickly from a quick staff perspective before we hire a consultant to get really deep into not only looking, and my understanding, we need about seven feet on each side, approximately.
Yeah, 14.
We would have to, you know, look not only, you know, geography-wise, if we could even put it there, but then also the kind of estimate in terms of what the acquisition of right-of-way and other property in order to do it. Can we just take a quick look at that from a staff perspective before engaging a consultant? Is that even possible to take that interim step, or do you feel that wouldn't be enough, you know, critical data, I guess, in order to even make an interim decision?
I think you would need to get into a little bit more detail, and it probably would involve a consultant study, but then again, also referring it to the TFP means it has to compete with other TFP projects, and that is a process in and of itself.
Okay. I heard a number tonight that it would take $8 million to acquire all the necessary property in order to do that. Is that an accurate number?
No, what that is, is the cost of the three Bike Bellevue segments that we talked about, repurposing the travel lane. That's about 8.1 million.
Okay, okay, thank you. So if in your estimation, even after doing the further analysis or further study and engaging other consultants, would you go into a pilot or into a demonstration project first, or would you go right into actual design and implementation? And then where does the council fit in with this? Would you come to us regardless of which approach you take? What's the next steps in terms of our ability to weigh in on this next?
I wonder if you need to hear from everybody before you answer that, or if you can answer that now.
It would have to be part of the TFP process, which the council will play a role in adopting. But again, it'd have to be competing with a variety of different other transportation planning projects and construction projects as well. And by the time it got to that point, we would have a better idea of what the cost estimation would be.
Okay, okay. Well, again, part of that is, you know, our discussion about making the removal of car lanes as a last resort. So I think anything that dealt with the removal of a car lane, either demo or actual project or pilot, that that would come back to council before you actually move forward with that.
I would bring that back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you. You know, I too want to thank all of the community engagement because, you know, really shows that we all care about Bellevue, and we very much pride ourselves on making sure that we're always grounded in public safety, and that includes on our roadways. So as I consider the Transportation Commission recommendation, as well as the director recommendation, here are some things that I've been thinking about, and I want to hear from my colleagues as well, which is on page five and six are our guiding principles that we...
Of the packet?
Of the PowerPoint.
Of the PowerPoint.
Of the PowerPoint, five and six. So, you know, to me, this is very much grounded in our Vision Zero, which is zero serious injuries and deaths by 2030. It is also based on a bike rapid implementation plan. This was something that was adopted when I was on the Transportation Commission like 10 years ago. So it's something that we recognized over 10 years ago was a really important aspect of overall public safety in Bellevue. We also, on the map, identified high injury network, high injury network corridors, where those are the places that have the most injuries. And then this also plays into the fact that we know as part of our environmental sustainability that 40% of our emissions comes from transportation. So I'm thinking about the recommendations of both from that lens. And so here's what I'm wondering, is when I think about the Transportation Commission recommendation, it's not clear to me how taking this off the table actually makes it safer for all road users, especially as I think about the fact that this corridor has several schools, it has a community center, it has a YMCA, it has lots of businesses that people are going to frequent along that corridor. So I'm curious about, as we talk about safety, how we are going to consider what safety looks like if what we're saying is that what we have out there is actually what we're going to accept as safe enough? So if it was one of our family, one of our kids that was part of those casualties, would we actually say that that was enough? And those are some things I'm thinking about as I'm considering both of these recommendations. And when I think about our commitment as a region, which includes Redmond, and we heard from... from, can't remember the lady's name, Kelly. Kelly Reefer from Redmond, that they just yesterday voted on creating a buffered bike lane coming from the Redmond side into Bellevue. I'm also now curious about, so what are those bicyclists going to experience as they come down Bell Red into Bellevue, going to some of these businesses? And this is going to be our Bell Red Art District, where we're hoping for a lot more vibrancy in our community. So what does that safety actually look like? And so I guess lastly, where I'm at is, as I'm listening to this, what I'm hearing is the Director's recommendation is put it in the TFP. Andrew, what I heard you say is that it's going to compete with many other projects. When I think about Spring District as a potential solution, when I look at where that is on the map, it's not clear to me how creating that connection actually helps the businesses on Bell Red, because you still have to get from there to Bell Red. So I'm trying to imagine, if you're coming from Redmond, how does actually having a connection through the Spring District help all of those businesses and the schools and the community center and the Y? How does it actually help to make that corridor safer? And then when I think about Vision 2030, we're talking about 2030. So in a TFP, it's not in the CIP. So what's the earliest that an improvement would actually happen? So how does that actually address the fact that this is supposed to be a rapid implementation of try some corridors, do some pilots, do some measurements? And I'm not necessarily seeing that either one of the recommendations actually gets at the heart of these goals that we established on page five and six of our presentation. So I'd just like to better understand that and then hear from my colleagues about where they are. Because at this point, it's not clear to me that we're both addressing a long-term solution as well as the short-term rapid implementation. So could you help me with what your thinking is on both of those?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whichever one of you.
You brought up safety, and that's a very important point. Bell Red Road is not a safe road to ride on. There are alternatives that people use today. It's a, it has issues because it's a very heavily, very busy road. But one of the biggest issues, and it's not reflected here in our safety analysis, because we use LTS for safety, if we put a lane in that is separated from cars, you still have every single intersection. You still have every ramp, and you have cars going in and out of those ramps. When you bike, you will probably notice that when a car is approaching a driveway and you're going to cross perpendicular, it causes alarm. That's where most of the accidents occur. So when we talked about it on the commission, we talked about safety is broader than LTS. And we had a pretty good discussion about if we built more infrastructure on Bell Red Road, but we had all of those incursions. I mean, there's over 70, a combination of 70 driveways and intersections on Bell Red Road in each direction, that we would actually be encouraging people to use a roadway that is not up to safety thoughts, especially when you think about Vision Zero. So that was, that was part of what went into our conversation. And so I wanted to address that one because you asked about safety. Is there any other one that you wanted me to?
No, I hear what you're saying. I think what I'm hearing, though, is more of the, so we just don't, my words maybe not yours, that we then are essentially saying we don't want bikes, that this road is just dedicated for cars? Is that what?
No, I would say that we all want better bike infrastructure. The question is, where does it go? And where's the safest place to put the infrastructure? And we have in these nine corridors that we've looked at already of the 11, we've already identified east-west corridors for further study and for other ways to get those incorporated without taking lanes away. So you have east-west corridors, you have alternatives. When you have a busy arterial like Bell Red, there's ways to get to it via spokes from other parallel corridors. And so when we looked at it from, that was the, that was one of the conversations we had, is looking at it, where is the best place to put that east-west corridor? And we talked about the other corridors that are in Bike Bellevue, and we also talked about further emphasis on completing Spring Boulevard as a multimodal road.
Well, this may be one where we might just agree to disagree about the fact that, again, what I'm hearing you say indirectly is that in Bellevue, we see Bell Red as a car road and really don't welcome bikes, because we believe instead of addressing safety, that we just assume that you bike somewhere else. So again, my summary of what I heard you say, in my own words.
Does staff have any? Did you want to ask staff anything?
Well, so then my question to Andrew was about the TFP. And ultimately, help me understand how long of a, what's the earliest we would actually be able to do any improvements, assuming that this corridor competes well with other projects in the TFP?
I mean, it is a, we're talking about a long-term project, there's no question about it. Spring Boulevard and completing the design work and getting to the point of completion for that missing piece is at least 2030 away, just given environmental regulations and permitting processes. Like I said earlier, too, the repurposing of the travel lane is still, you know, out there. It would have to be evaluated as part of the alternative, so we'd be looking at when doing a project like that in the TFP. So that is, could potentially still be on the table.
So is it possible to have a both and, where we look at a long-term solution as well as a short-term pilot on Bell Red as what Bike Bellevue contemplates? So we're actually trying to have our cake and eat it too, and have a both and?
Did you want to?
Councilmember Zahn, the cake and eating scenario costs a lot of money. As Andrew mentioned earlier, the Bell Red Road early implementation, rapid implementation was over $8 million. The Bike Bellevue CIP has had $4,500,000 in it. And that resource is being dedicated to the early implementation projects that the commission has approved, the Wilburton Corridor Northeast First and Second, and the Lake Washington Boulevard Corridor. Those corridors consume all the CIP dedicated to Bike Bellevue. So there's not a resource available to do a pilot on Bell Red Road at the moment.
Okay. I look forward to hearing from my colleagues. Thank you.
All right, Council, Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor. A great job, as my fellow council member mentioned. I want to thank your staff, all of you. I don't know where is Paula, but including her. You guys do an amazing job and is a effort that we appreciate. Also appreciate you, Vice Chair, on behalf of the Transportation Commission. Thank you so much for all of the effort you do. I'm not aware of any, I was, I tried to acknowledge Councilmember Newan-House that we can disagree about something, and we can talk about it, and we don't need to name-calling. I'm not aware, but if I have a voice, I think we should all be able to discuss issues that is important to us, and we have different opinion in respect, listening to each other without any judgment. So hopefully, we are going to do that. And also thank you for all of the community as well, on both sides of the topic, or hybrid.
All sides.
Yeah, all sides. Appreciate your coming here and telling us what is important for you. Some of my question has been answered, but I'm going to kind of repeat it to make sure I understand, because I'm a little bit confused myself. Have we moved from the rapid implementation? Because I was under impression that the vision, the value of this body, before I joined, has been to have a rapid implementation of a safe, completed network of bike for bikers and pedestrians and rollers. Have we, have this body or previous body, or somehow we have moved from this, that rapid, the umbrella of rapid implementation?
Well, like Kevin was saying before, it was a limited set of resources available to it. It was 4.5 million. The first four projects pretty much take that up. That doesn't mean that there's not going to be additional capital improvement programs that are going to be happening in the future that could fund additional bike projects. But I really believe that the part of the council direction that we ended up receiving was really to have repurposing of travel lanes be a last resort, and that was one of the things that are up there. What does last resort mean? I mean, that'd be something that we'd have to find out through bringing a project through the TFP process and determining that.
Okay. So your answer is two parts. One is, we don't have a budget. One is the last resort definition, kind of. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yeah.
So in, addressing the first thing, the budget, if we don't have a budget, then we need to come up with a budget somehow. We have done that in a budget planning or some other. So to me, that's not an issue, because I know we need to have a budget for doing anything in this city. The other part of this that you mentioned is the last resort. I was under impression that the last resort comment is under the rapid implementation. That means we go and exhaust all of the other options, that you did some of them very nicely. In some of your corridors, you reduced a very wide travel lane, and you, without any repurposing travel lane, you now have a bike lane. Great. So you went and come back, and I thought that's what the direction was. Under the rapid implementation, we go and exhaust all of our options. And of course, if there is no other option as a last, last resort, then we have that repurposing, again, I'm not talking about Bell Red, I'm talking about in general, we have that option on the table. To me, the last resort in your definition or your implementation of your recommendation is there is no repurposing of, I don't even know what is the difference now, because your interpretation, or again, that's different than mine, of last resort is no repurposing the, any road capacity for our bike infrastructure. And to me, that's not the definition of last resort. First, we have an umbrella of rapid implementation. That's the vision and value I am still following as this body. And I thought we are going to exhaust all of the options, maybe alternative routes, maybe a Spring Boulevard. And if there is no other option, then of course, let's just do a pilot. Let's just do, let's just do, again, the best example that we have is our 108 Street. We have, we repurposed road capacity to bike lane. We piloted, we studied the pilot, we did, there is no impact on our traffic. We kept it for now, and maybe in future, we remove that because we see that there is some impact on our traffic. So to me, my disconnect is this recommendation is not using the road capacity, the repurposing road lane as a last resort, is removing it whatsoever. And again, I'm not talking about Bell Red. In general, I think that's not at least the direction that I was in this March meeting. So that's one comment I have. The other thing is about the process of TFP, kind of asking this question, that whatever goes to TFP, again, you mentioned if it gets prioritized. Am I right, did I hear you correctly? Then it's going to a planned development cycle, am I right? So it's going to be two or three years, that that's the whole duration. And then you do the data analysis, public input, some coordination with other departments. Then is a public engagement, I guess. So then it's going to be a planned adoption at some point in future. So easily, you're talking about 10 years. Again, I don't want to put a year in your mouth, but am I right that it's going to be eight, nine, 10 years, whole, again, and then if we have the budget? Is that correct assumption of anything goes to TFP if it gets prioritized?
Deputy Mayor, I think 10 years may be on the outside edge of...
What is the inside?
Implementation, or on the inside edge, might be three or four years. And here's why, because the TFP, the Transportation Facilities Plan, as you correctly stated, identifies priorities and establishes a funding level to move forward with those priorities. So that the first round is competition with other projects to see if you should be funded. And if you are recommended to be funded through the Transportation Facilities Plan, then actual funding has to be assigned by the council through the CIP. So that is another process through which funding is made available for these projects. And then when funding is made available for the projects, then design and implementation may take another year. So yeah, you're looking at a several-year process. Now, just back to the original premise of Bike Bellevue. The idea of Bike Bellevue was rapid implementation, was to do, to look at all of these corridors and implement them more or less around the same time, so you could have a network that is connected and safe for the bike riders. That connected network was predicated on, in using the CIP money that the council assigned and receiving grant funding to the tune of about $18 million. That grant funding was not received. So we are left with the $4.5 million that we are using on the earliest implementation projects that we can come up with at this point. The other projects will have to compete for scarce resources that the council may provide.
And I completely understand the funding. There is $18 million that we thought we have and we don't have. That's completely makes sense to me. My last comment, Mayor, is I am still under, because you mentioned was rapid implementation, to me, still, we need to, at least where I stand is a rapid implementation. We should exhaust all of the option before repurposing a travel lane, as I mentioned, as this body mentioned, as a last resort. And you already explored alternative, maybe some of the stuff, but again, we cannot just remove the repurposing the lane whatsoever from all of our plans. I think it should be just a last resort. And of course, we can just find a budget, that's the most important, and prioritizing, I understand that piece. And I understand we need to pilot, we need to find the data, and we should be careful evaluating stuff. And we should be always flexible on these topics. I think this body, this council emphasized inflexibility, and I understand why Councilmember Zahn mentioned. It is an and, let's just do something that in a short term, get us to where we want to be on Vision Zero by 2030, but also, of course, in long run, apply for more grants, find somehow money in our budget, in other ways, and do the long-run planning for that beautiful bike infrastructure that Councilmember Newan-Hass was mentioning. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Lot to think about here. I concur with my colleagues about rapid implementation of safe and complete routes. I mean, that's, I think, our, everybody's goal. And as somebody who does ride their bike all over Bellevue, where we have the infrastructure, it's great. Where we don't, it's scary. It really is dangerous, and it deters me from wanting to ride my bike. So I'm going to, you know, I look at this map that you have with the lines on it, and I've talked about this personally to you guys so many times, I'll go bring it up again. You have the black line as existing bicycle network. Well, I'll tell you, on Main Street, you have a block that's missing any bicycle infrastructure whatsoever. So to put that as an existing bicycle network kind of offends me, is, there's a big hole there. And a big enough hole that it deters me from wanting to ride my bike to the light rail station, because I have to wrestle. station because I have to wrestle with the cars every single time when I get to that block. And I think about, I look at this map, and, you know, we want people to be able to ride their bikes to light rail safely and go wherever they want to go, and then ride their bikes, continue on to where they want to go safely. And, and so I wonder what other holes are in our existing bicycle network that concerns me. So I'd sure like to prioritize some of the holes we have that we consider done.
Right. We talked about, and this is just a small portion of the city, but we talked about the update to the MIP, to try to go beyond this geography and look at some of the other key missing links that are happening all over the city. And I think that that's a body of work that needs to occur.
Okay. Well, when you put a map like this up, put a little red line where we're missing things, and that, that will be informative to us. I really appreciate the Transportation Commission recommendation. I'm, I've got a foot in both camps here. I can see both sides of this, and so I'm probably going to make everybody mad, but that's okay. So I appreciate the recommendation pretty much. There's a couple of things I disagree with. With the Northup, Corridor 1, those segments A, B, and C, those need to be rapid implementation. And I, I think that, you know, if there's something you can do temporarily to make those safe while you're working on something that's more costly, I would hope that we would look at things that way. Because that is a, you know, a very fast road with a lot of traffic, and that's a, that is a key bike corridor, as you know. So making that safe quickly is of top priority. And then Belred, I think we should, I mean, how do we know? You gave a great rationale for the Transportation Commission, saying, let's not study this. Well, we don't know till we study it, is my opinion. And so I would like to study it and find out. What is the best treatment for this? Is this a no-go road? Or as we think, maybe? Or is it, is there a way to do this? Is there a way to do it quickly? Could we do a pilot project? Do we need to wait and do a major infrastructure and put it in the transportation program? So, I mean, I think we need to study it to find out. So I would like, I do appreciate staff's recommendation on that. Corridor 8, love to see a pilot project on that to get information so we know what the impact of that is, both good or bad. Corridor 10, that's such a short segment, but you, that's kind of the missing segment, and you feel like the rest of it, so that seems critical. So I did want to ask you, so I'm all for staff recommendation to include Belred. I would like to do something more rapid on Northup, and I would like to start identifying some of these gaps in our existing bike infrastructure. So my question to you, if we had all the money, if money were no object, how quickly could we implement all the bike infrastructure that we wanted to do? Is it, is money the issue entirely, or is timing, is man, or people power, excuse me, materials?
It's staffing resources needed as well as part of that. That would limit the ability to do it all at once.
Okay. So it's just a staffing, that you could hire more staff?
And the money too, so.
But you could hire more staff if we had a budget for that, right?
Well, yeah. We'd have to take a look at that to see how much we could actually do and what amount of time. And I'm talking about beyond the Bike Bellevue geography.
Well, if the majority of the council wants rapid implementation of safe and complete routes, I'd love to see a budget ask from the Department of Transportation here for what it would cost to do that. Okay.
Mayor, can I ask you a point of clarification?
Yes.
My understanding tonight was this is going to be information only, and we could take in the information, ask questions, or give our opinions on it. But it sounds to me like we're, you're now giving direction on the corridors as well as funding, as well as
I'm giving my opinion.
Other resources?
I'm giving my opinion, and I'm asking for, when we get the budget, when you, we will look at the budget, that we look at that.
Okay. I just want to say, if, if we went down that route, I'd like to have some direction as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you. This is, it's always interesting to be in this place on conversations and everything. And actually, I like it this time. I think that there are a lot of things that's been covered, and, you know, Councilmember Zahn and Councilmember Deputy Mayor Malicutian, and Mayor Robinson's comments and all, I, I go along with those. I think they've addressed a lot of issues that I would address, all this. I do, what I think is kind of interesting when you look at it is that we have all of a sudden, after a lot of work and years of talking about a comprehensive bike and other modes of, of transit, ways to go, light rail, buses, other things, we're not just locating, we're not on bus, on, on cars going up roads real fast. And we're, and what we come up with on this, instead of looking at that, which I think we've, we've been doing it to a certain point, all of a sudden, we have a group and people get told about, you know, what's happening, and so they're wanting to say, let's keep things as it are. It kind of tickled me on the, on the, I don't think those letters that were sent out, 2,000, 3,000 of them, I mean, 300. It was good, you know, to have people comment about it. They said the same thing that somebody gave them to say. But I thought the, what they're saying in the comment was, we're going backwards on Bellevue. I think actually, this idea of looking at things is kind of confusing on that. I'm just saying that people are looking at things in different ways and presenting them in different ways, and I think it's been a good conversation. And I think I've looked at that and what they've been put out there, and I think there's things we can look at that. I think there's some genuine concerns about what's going on and all that. And I think it, I thought also, it's something that when we're doing any kind of project, it's always kind of hard to keep up with the public and let them know why we're doing this, how we're doing it. And there might be a little something we can work on in that. But overall, well, one other factor is, I go around and you look at just up to Redmond, and they're doing things that we would like to be doing now. And you look around this country, you look around a lot of places, they're doing things, this is, this is not something somebody just come, come up with. They're, they're doing what we want to do all over the country. And we, what we're talking about is wanting to keep a system in 2024, in 2034, 44, 40, 64. Because we don't want to worry, we don't want to have to worry about bikes going in there and about people running across the driveway and all that. This, this is not a unique, different situation than we have in a lot of other places. So basically, I don't quite understand why, why we're having such angst on this. And, and I haven't gotten, seen anything that would help us on that. But it's a conversation we need to have. But at the same time, what it comes down to is, we need, and I think the mayor put it very well in terms of, let's go forward on this. When we look at this, and, and we have a lot of things to work on, and I think when it comes out for it, people are going to understand, look back and say, wow, I'm glad we did this. If we don't do it, it's like, wow, why are we still back in the early 20s? So I think we're at a point that we're taking a big step in doing something that is actually better for the city, both for traffic, both for people who are riding their bicycles, walking. And it's something people are doing all over the country, and doing here, and we're kind of saying, wait a minute, we don't want to do that because we like what we have. So I think we'll get to a good point on this. I think it's a good discussion back and forth. And I really appreciate hearing about people's concerns about it and why, and raising these issues and realizing that we need to do a lot more work in terms of collaborating and talking with people. But I, again, I, I think we're at a point where the recommendation is good, what's come up with this, and that we need to go forward on it, as suggested, and I agree, as I said, with my colleagues on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and the update. It's good to see we're making progress on Bike Bellevue goals. And it's good to see, too, so much enthusiasm around Bike Bellevue, and what I'm hearing from my colleagues, a desire to continue with that and to build on what we're already doing. And I think clearly, that's going to require some more money. We've spent all we have, and I think if we want to continue writing checks, which I think we probably should, then we need to find some more money. So I think we're, we're really moving in a good direction. I want to just clear something up regarding one of the categories, and it's category three. And is that a category that we would assign a corridor to, or we would attach that to a corridor, like we did with category one, so that if there was an intention to repurpose a travel lane or do a pilot project, we would see that right now on the list?
Yes. If, if a road was to be, lane was repurposed, we would treat it as a pilot with a beginning and an end and metrics to go along with it to see whether or not it worked.
And we would see that tonight in your presentation, right? You would, you would communicate that to us? That would be a category three, and it would be listed next to the corridor?
If it was one of the recommendations
Okay.
That came out of the commission.
Okay. Great. Thank you. You know, when I first got a look at
I think Kevin wants to say something.
Andrew suggested that I follow up, if I may.
Please.
There, there are no current recommendations to move forward with the travel lane repurposing because of the direction from the council to consider that as a last resort. And we haven't analyzed all the other resorts. Until we, until we do that, we can't recommend a lane repurposing.
Okay. Great. Thank you for clearing that up. So when I first got a look at Bike Bellevue, I thought it was a bit of a mess, to be honest. And I think Andrew, to your credit, and to Paula, and to Kevin, and everyone else, you stepped in, and I think you righted the ship. You showed strong principled leadership, and I think you're primarily responsible for getting Bike Bellevue back on solid ground. And I think we've been clear for quite some time that we want and need to build bike infrastructure in our city. And traveling to other cities, as has been mentioned, you see this all over the place. This is not unique to Bellevue. I think, you know, not, not only that, but we're, we've been very clear that we want to build bike infrastructure. And I think if, if we're not looking at it, not building it, we're not doing our jobs. I think obviously, there are a lot of viewpoints, my email inbox proves that, on how to implement and move Bike Bellevue forward. And I think we can incorporate all of these viewpoints and studies and analysis and still move forward. It's clear we're deploying all of the rapid implementation funds that we currently have, which I think is great. You know, Corridor 7 comes online this summer. As mentioned, Corridors 6A, 6B, and 9 have a good chance of coming online next year. Corridor 2 is in design. I know that we're all anxious to bring these facilities online ASAP, but this, to me, is what ASAP looks like. I think we're moving along at a healthy clip, and I, as I mentioned earlier, I think we should continue that momentum. And I think too, you know, we have rapid implementation goals, but we have long-term or medium-term goals, and I think we should continue to focus on all those. And so while we're working hard on these rapid bike facilities, we, we're, I think, as you're suggesting, that we're working just as hard on building bike facilities that are substantial, they're permanent, and by definition, more complex. And so while a roadway might not fit for a rapid implementation facility, it could fit for a substantial, permanent, or complex facility. Or as some have made a pretty compelling case, may not fit. I see moving Corridors 3, 4, and 5 to category 5 kind of moves them out of the rapid build category and into this medium term, which I think is important for us to have a robust list of projects. And if substantial, permanent bike infrastructure is built along these corridors at some point, the inherent complexity and difficulty requires thoughtful, thorough planning. The Transportation Facilities Plan process seems well-designed to guide us through the necessary steps to successfully build bike infrastructure along any major arterial in our city. And I want to be sure that we're studying, as has been mentioned, opportunities all over the city. Previous councils voted for two north-south routes, two east-west routes, and I think we need to continue to look at all of those. I agree with those previous decisions, and I want to encourage us to also examine where all those paths can be built. So you're building a viable rapid build opportunities now. You're also working on projects that require more time, effort, and planning. I think you've struck a good balance, and you're making progress. So well done. You've certainly earned my confidence, and while not universal, there is substantial support for moving Corridors 3, 4, and 5 to category 5. And it makes sense to look at, to me, to look at those in the context of permanent bike infrastructure, which we have not done yet. And I completely understand past studies have caused folks to question the findings and rightfully object to reframing of data. I trust you to make sure we do it right. And if you think we should study Corridors 3, 4, and 5 in a different context, then I'm with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I really appreciate the people that come to testify on all sides. The mayor says three sides, but actually, it's all sides, for, against, or in the middle. I think it's important, it reflects, to me, this is a very complex topic. We are trying to resolve a very complicated topic with some very supposed to be simple, straightforward solutions. And the city has been doing this for the last 30 years. I'm sure you know that, Kevin. We have a bicycle plan. We have a road plan. 30 years ago, we were concerned about cars, right? Now, we're concerned about, we have more people, we're concerned about pedestrians, we're concerned about safety, we're concerned about bicycles, other modes of transportation. Before, we only have one standard, it's mobility, cars. Now we have multimodal standards. So we need to include all that stuff. But we're trying to solve it by simple solutions. And that's what's causing one of the problems we're seeing. We're not looking at the big picture. We should be, because they're all related. It's not just Belred Corridor, it's 405, Stanton Bellevue, it's everywhere, connects to Redmond. So we kind of figure out, you know, what's the big picture? How does one affect the other? And then we have to decide, you know, we have to decide. Well, one of the way to do that is, what is the thing that we really need to address at this moment, which is most important? You know, the old way of looking at motorcycle lanes, let's connect them, right? East, west, south, north, however we can, connect them. We don't even connect them with roads. We don't even can link them. We didn't, we won't talk about those things because that's not the topic of discussion. But now it is. So we need to make sure. And that's why we have commissions. We appreciate commissioners, because that's what you do. You listen to all the people in the community. Doesn't matter which side you're on, bicyclists, pedestrians, people who don't drive, people, people who use automotive transportation, people who do drive. Who are they? What are they? Data. So you, you have done your, your job, wonderful job. And the public has to step up. And we are public. Bellevue is a great city because the public's engaged. If the public doesn't say anything, we would still be living 50 years ago. No. So, so we're still trying to use, so we need to look at this whole thing. The real, really thoroughly, look at the big picture, how we can solve problems, solutions. I want to compliment Deputy Mayor, you're very wise. You know, rather than say, hey, these are all the solutions we can have. Of course we can, you know, but how does it affect somebody else? How does it affect business? How does it affect Belred Corridor people? How does it affect people who, who has to do business, who has to live, has to take the kids to school, driving, you know, during 24 hours a day? Not just during the time when you want to do something. And there's money involved. I agree, if we are unlimited resource, is there such a thing as unlimited resource? If I have the resource, we don't need city councils. We don't need to be here, right? It's not possible. We have to know, people mentioned today, I think it's car, benefit and costs. Always, when we look at it, what do we want to accomplish? Always, when we look at it, what do we want to accomplish? All right? What's the benefit we're getting? For whom? For who? For how many of us? And then what's the cost? Can we afford it? That's one question. Okay? Ask the taxpayers. You know, we see the dictator states, they don't have to ask people, they confiscate. If you don't give money, put it in jail. We can't do that. You know, it's voluntary. So we need to. So thank you for doing all that. We hope, thank you for coming up, and we need to work together. Listen, that's what is happening today at the tires. I appreciate that. We're listening, we're talking to each other. Hopefully, we'll see for our conversation. Listen to staff, you have your perspective, right? So we'll come up with some real solutions, which is not going to be perfect, impossible, which is not going to be F big and happy, but at least it compromises, that's going to take us to the next step, which will solve some problem that we see that's most important right now. You talk about TFP. Yes, once you decide it's worthwhile, it just takes a few years, but there are many TFPs in your pot. Ninety percent of them don't go anywhere, right? They don't go anywhere, or every few of them do. So how do we know what TFP we're going to decide to put here is going to work? We're going to go through the same process. We're going to have the same argument. People don't come say, I want this. So no, how does it affect that? Who cares? We should care, because that's all we should do. So I really believe that we need to understand what, how the relationship each are, and then figure out which was the most important. I like your idea. We've been working on this. That's why we've this rapid implementation, that's the idea recommendation. We can do something without interrupting other things, so that we don't have people come and say, we don't want to do it. Then we try that, see, doesn't work. It works? That's good. We use it as a model. Why do we have to say, because there's a road there, and we want to have a bike there, so we want to take that road away? Because the person who wants to use the road, what happened to them? So why don't we find another way? The people must say, hey, you can use this, and we can make compromises. So people can ride bicycle? You don't have perfect, you don't, when we designed Bel Air corridor, that's the best planning there is that we did, is recognized by the country. Now it's being implemented. We didn't think about using bicycle there when we decided. Now we have to change it. Should we? Should we not? Do we need to? Let's talk about it, right?
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, thank you. I'll let you finish.
I hope you do. I hope you do, because this is a dialogue. Dialogue means I say something that hopefully it, everybody will understand, we can talk, make us a little bit wiser, smarter. Otherwise, we're just going to keep making this kind of decisions, we're going to continue to fight. We all share the same thing. And the business, and business people should listen, the other side, can we make some compromises, right? I mean, that's what we do. Rapid implementation worked, so let's continue with that, right? We didn't have $10 million grant, well, let's try that harder, right? Infrastructure money is, got trillions of money, let's give it a shot. Let's make sure everybody supports that, makes sense. And one thing that the city council and the public will support, let's not rob Peter to pay Paul. Don't try to, yeah, if we can do that. If we cannot, let's do the next best, so we all can, because the next time, the Peter might be the one that's giving you. This time, the Paul will give you. But it's okay, that's what we do, that's how we live together. The family does that.
Councilmember Lee, would you mind finishing up here so we can move on?
Well, I'm the last person to speak. So I hope that's understood, okay? So don't jump the gun, that's that we're going to do everything. No, we're not. Okay? Let's figure out what project we can do to make a difference, that we can talk about it, we can agree, and we're happy about it. If we cannot, let's figure out another way to do it. End my conversation. So I'm not going to tell you how to do anything, because I don't know. I have my own perspective, I do, but there's all the 150,000 people in the city of Bellevue. Listen to them. Councilmembers, only seven of us, any one of us cannot say, we want this, and that's what I need. So we make it difficult for staff to commission us, because when we say something, you say, wow, councilmembers say it, we have to listen to you, because somehow we control, we don't, we should not control you, right? We shouldn't control you either.
Okay, thank you. So we have in front of us a recommendation from the Transportation Commission, then the staff made a counter recommendation. This is just to inform us, we've all had a chance to say what we think. I'm hearing a majority in support of the staff recommendation. I think I'm going to let Councilmember Nguyen-House have his say, because he didn't, he started first and he didn't, you said you wanted to speak again or not necessarily?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. But I would say, City Manager, I think we should have another study session on Bike Bellevue where we can actually talk about values and priorities and make sure that we're all clear on what, how we want to move forward with this, because we've heard a lot of different things tonight, and I think we need to be on the same page.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we appreciate very much the conversation tonight and the perspectives of the council, and there is still a continued process at the Transportation Commission, and so we will work with staff after that and decide when this can come back.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a little break. I'm sorry to do that to everybody, but we'll be back at quarter after. Okay, we are back in session. City Manager, would you like to introduce our final study session item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So our staff tonight from Development Services are here to request council consideration to direct them to initiate work on a sign code amendment, and that would be a comprehensive update of the city's sign code. And we know the sign code is of interest to council and many stakeholders, so we anticipate there will be many opportunities for engagement should you direct staff to initiate the work. So we have Christina Galant, Acting Code and Policy Director, Matthew Menard, our Code and Policy Senior Planner, and I'd like to introduce Assistant City Attorney Robbie Sepler. This is his first appearance before council since joining the city last fall. And of course, we have our Director Rebecca Horner. So with that, I will turn it over to Christina.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and council members. So as noted, this evening, we have an initiation of one of our code amendments, which has been prioritized on the 2024-2025 Loopy Work Plan. As noted, this is the anticipated sign code update, and, so, next slide, please. Oh, it's late. And the direction that we are seeking this evening is to consider initiating work on the sign code Bellevue City Code Amendment. So with that, I will pass to Matthew for our agenda.
So tonight, first, we'll be talking about the goals of the Bellevue City Code Amendment. We'll be talking about Supreme Court decision in Reed versus Town of Gilbert. We'll give you an overview of the sign code amendment, talk about internal collaboration and some external outreach that we'll be doing, and then close with the schedule. So we do want to ensure that this code meets the needs of the businesses of the community. I think we've heard from essentially every council member at this point that they would like us to also ensure that we are heavily focusing on the needs of small businesses within the community, and we can do that in several ways, but one of which is to simplify and streamline our code. We don't want to saddle businesses, especially small businesses, with high cost of permitting and high cost of having to hire an entire team to go through our sign permitting process. So making sure our code is understandable for businesses, understandable for the public, and easy for our development review teams to review as well. We also want to make sure we are allowing contemporary construction techniques, contemporary design techniques, and contemporary aesthetics for signs as well with our sign code. And we do need to align with the Supreme Court decision in Reed versus Town of Gilbert and some other court decisions. And I will hand it over to Robbie to speak about those.
Good evening, council. So there's a lot of nuanced case law about signs, but I'm going to summarize the general rule here from the U.S. Supreme Court, and that rule was expressed in the Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona Supreme Court case from 2015. And so that rule generally says that for non-commercial signs, we generally cannot regulate them based on the content of the sign, and we must regulate all non-commercial signs of the same type in the same manner. And really, the rule from Reed can be summarized as a rule of thumb of being generally, if you have to read the sign, to know how to regulate it, that's generally not okay anymore. So going to the next slide here, I'll give you an example of that. So the sign on the left here, the Good News Presbyterian sign, that was the sign that was an issue in the Reed decision. The Town Sign Code categorized it as a temporary directional sign, which had certain dimensions it was allowed to be. It was allowed to be in certain places for a certain amount of time, and there was a limit on the number. The key dimension was it could be six square feet, but under the Town Sign Code, other types of temporary signs had differing treatment based on their purpose and what they said, their content. So for example, on the image on the right, this kind of shows the comparison. Ideological signs that were temporary could be bigger, political signs that were temporary could be even bigger, and homeowners association signs could be even larger. And that's the issue that the U.S. Supreme Court took with the Town Sign Code, is that they said, well, you have to read this, read the sign, and you're regulating it different depending on content, and that's generally not going to be okay, Town. So what does that leave us as another city? What can we still regulate in our sign code? Well, we can still regulate to form, so that's the materials, the dimensions, how the sign is attached to a building or to the ground. We can still regulate on location, so to make sure we don't interfere with certain types of facilities or block sightlines, for example. We can regulate on timing, with a small caveat, there's some Washington state-specific case law that we have to take into account, but we can set some limits on how long a sign can be up in certain circumstances. We can regulate for lighting, whether it could be lit at all, and if so, what types of lighting we could have. And we can also regulate for safety, of course, to make sure that the sign's not going to fall off the wall it's mounted on or not going to lead to a traffic accident of some sort. So that's the basic summary. I'm going to hand it back over here to Matthew.
Thank you. So this is anticipated to be a complete rewrite of the existing sign code due to the Supreme Court decision and the age of our sign code. We do think it's simpler for both the code-writing team and the public to understand if we basically set aside our existing sign code and start anew. Generally, we would do that, strike underline that you would see with our amendments. With a number of changes for this code, we do think that will get very confusing very quickly for the public to understand what's happening with the sign code. We may bring some of the existing provisions into the new sign code, but we will treat those as new provisions essentially under this. And we do want to address concerns from the community. We've reached out to both our land use teams who review sign permit applications and our economic development team, who is generally our bridge to the business community, and we've heard a few things already from what we're wanting to see from the business community on the sign front. So there's some desire for additional street-level signage, especially around retail establishments. There's some complication in the way we permit off-premise directional signs. We have to, they are required to meet our variance criteria, and there's some discretion in that. So there's been a request for more permissiveness around off-site directional signs. There's been requests to allow portable signs, which are generally those A-frame signs you would see on the sidewalk, often associated, again, with retail establishments or restaurants. Some places in the city, there's different sign standards if you're on one side of the street versus another side of the street, so there's some desire from the business community to have consistency across commercial districts, so we don't have at least a, you know, perceived advantage for one business over another, even though they're essentially adjacent. We always hear with any sort of amendment that we are working on, simplicity in permitting. That both goes for simplicity for applicants, but also simplicity for us to review. The less time it takes us to review these permits, the more staff capacity we have to review other permits more quickly as well. And we've heard there's a desire for more explicitness and more permissiveness for event signage, especially around conventions and other events downtown. This will be highly collaborative between departments. As you see here, it is being led by our Code and Policy Team and the City Attorney's Office due to the highly legal nature of this update. It will also require involvement from our Economic Development Department, who I mentioned is our bridge to the business community, our land use team and Development Services, who does a lot of our permitting, so most intimately knows the code, and also can tell us where the hangups in the permitting system are right now. Our transportation teams, a lot of these signs are in the right of way or impact the right of way, so making sure we are not writing code that is going to implement our transportation in a negative way or conflict with any of their provisions. And our code compliance team, our code compliance team does the enforcement on signs. They hear a lot currently from the public, especially around temporary signs, and there are also some concerns from the code compliance team on the safety of the team members if they are having to go out into medians of busy roads, for example, to pull temporary signs. And we also want to discuss with them to make sure our code is enforceable. Anytime we write a new code, we want to make sure we can enforce that new code. We are planning to bring a consultant onboard with this project to fill in some capacity gaps, as well as fill in some gaps in our legal and code analysis. It's our relatively standard outreach process for this. This is a Bellevue City Code Amendment, not a land use code amendment, so the entire process will be handled by the city council. There's no planning commission involvement in this process. We've let the Bellevue Development Committee know that this is happening. We spoke with them a few weeks ago at one of their meetings and let them know that this launch was happening, and we'll engage them throughout the process. We'll engage the business community throughout the process as well. They're obviously going to be highly interested in this amendment. We've heard that they're interested in this amendment already, and I did reach out to the chamber as well and let them know that this meeting was happening. You've heard from a member of the public this evening that some of the neighborhoods have significant interest in this as well. There's often concerns amongst neighbors around aesthetics and lighting impacting people's homes and people's property, so we will need to strike that balance between the business community desire for more signage or bigger signage and what the neighborhoods are looking for to make sure they're protecting aesthetics and their quality of life. As I mentioned, it'll be highly collaborative internally, so we will have a lot of internal meetings to make sure that we are not impacting any other departments in a negative way. We always maintain an online presence with these. That will be a webpage that will give background on the project, where we are in the process, what are upcoming engagement opportunities or meetings that are happening, and then contact information for who to contact with questions on the project. We also send this out through the city newsletters, which is generally an email blast, which goes out to a large number of residents as well. And finally, the anticipated schedule. Tonight, we're at council initiation. If council were to initiate this evening, we will hopefully very quickly move to try to find a consultant for this project to get the project going as quickly as possible, beginning stakeholder outreach in the fall. We'd hope to have a check-in with council in Q1 of 2025 to give you all an update on what we're hearing, both from the consultant and from the public, and give you more details on the final schedule for this project. We are hoping to wrap this up by Q4 of 2025, acknowledging that there are a lot of state law projects and other large projects related to housing that are happening that are all wrapping up in the June-July timeframe of 2025, so making sure we're not overburdening ourselves and you all with large hearings for large-scale projects. And as a final reminder, we are requesting that council initiate this work this evening. And with that, Mayor, I will hand it back to you.
Okay, great. Well, let's start with a motion, Deputy Mayor.
I move to initiate work on the BCCA to comprehensively update the sign code, Chapter 2020B, 10BCC.
Second.
So I don't have anything to say myself, but I'll open it up in case anybody else says. So Councilmember Nguyen-House, why don't you start?
Thank you, Mayor. So it is late, so I'll try and keep it short, but thanks for the great presentation. I appreciate all the great content already in there, and I'm so glad that we're looking at this. My understanding is that we haven't updated our sign code since like about the '70s, so I would say it's about time that we took another look at this, as things have changed dramatically. The, you know, even the way we, you know, businesses advertise is a lot different. I think in the code right now, it's thinking about more of like, almost like a strip mall scenario all the time, where the signage is focused on the arterial. You see the sign and you can pull into the business. But certainly, I think, you know, things have changed, and for example, if you have a business that might be facing East Trail, but you want people on 116th to know that you're there as well, and you're not visible, that creates-- and you're not visible, that creates a very challenging situation for that business. So I'm really glad we're looking at this again. And these codes need to be updated. And I've heard time and time again from a lot of small business owners, from restaurateurs that have had some, you know, very challenging, you know, to understand the code and then how they interpret it. And then how it's interpreted might be different versus what staff might be telling them. A lot of times, they ended up having to, and you've mentioned this in your presentation, they might have to seek outside counsel or a consultant to help them get through this process. So, you know, to me, it kind of goes against, you know, Bellevue's reputation as a very business-friendly city. But yet, with the signage, I've heard restaurateurs tell me, well, it's easier to get signs or signage for my Seattle restaurant than it was for my Bellevue restaurant. So again, very glad that we're looking at this. And two just really quick stories. In fact, one of them was Dick's Drive-In. I met with them. In fact, Councilmember Hamilton joined me there. Just heard some very interesting things. And just to give you a perspective about what business owners are thinking about when they open up, you know, a branch or a business here, you know, they, Dick's Drive-In, which is such an incredible, you know, community business, and they're thrilled to have them back in Bellevue because they used to be. But they signed a lease with the property owner based on the staff's, how should I, it wasn't approval, but staff saying that, yes, you can do this kind of signage. They signed that lease. Unfortunately, that staff member came back later and said, actually, you can't do that. But they signed the lease based on the interpretation of the code that staff had provided them. So just one scenario there. And what's so critical for Dick, just like in the situation I described, is they're in the back of crossroads. They need some outside signage off the actual premise or off the actual building. And I don't think they're alone at all for these types of businesses or like the scenario I provided on the East Rail versus 116th. You know, also, we were dealing with Oliver, the owner of Kushi and the old California Pizza Kitchen. You know, he had a very challenging time understanding the code and getting to a point where he could have signage. But then the signage ended up being nothing what he was told that he could do or thought he could do. And again, he had to go down a very expensive route to finally get the little signage that he does. So my requests are multiple, and I just want to run them behind you. So increase the building signage overall in terms of the square foot amount. I think we should look at, consider on-premises sign as the actual premise of the building site, not just a physical retailer space itself. Increase the size of the individual retailer signs. Look at incorporate straightforward design standards that everybody can understand and needs very little interpretation. But if interpretation is needed, I think it would be great if we could provide some technical assistance, especially those who their first language might not be English. I think that would be really great, especially for small businesses that don't have the resources to hire someone, a consultant or legal. I think there should be some consideration if they have a master sign plan that coordinates all signage. I think that could be helpful as well. And then ensure that retailers and business can have signs in a place where the eyeballs are without a bunch of, I guess, administrative burden, going back to my earlier comment. And then retain the ability to, for building top signs as well. That's not an issue in downtown. But I think in some of our other kind of core retail sectors, be it, you know, crossroads or East Gate, there might be an opportunity there to have some signage on top of buildings there as well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, and this kind of came out of the conversation with Dick's Drive-In, was about this iconic business code variant, which has been used. This one I got from Federal Way, but it's been used at various other cities as well. I would request that we take a look at this and write this into the code as well. You know, this is really just an avenue where iconic businesses that have longevity, cultural, historical significance to the community, community support, has a proven track record of giving back to the community, so philanthropic activities, and has a real, you know, real family ties to this area, like a Dick's Drive-In or Ivors or you name it. And hopefully, that would give you another tool or some flexibility when making decisions about signage as well. So those are some of the things that I hope that you'll consider as you initiate this work. But I'm all for it and want to applaud you again for initiating this work. It'd be great if we could get it done earlier than Q4 of 2025. But really appreciate the fact that we're moving forward on this. So thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Newenhouse, very thoughtful comments. I have one quick question, and I just wanted to know if digital signage is under the contemporary sign design techniques that you have there?
It's something we'll certainly look at. It's something we've heard from the business community as well that they're interested in.
And I think we should also look at AI signage. Like, I'm sure there are going to be a real-time interaction very soon. I don't know, we can communicate with the sign, ask questions. So I think just because Councilmember Lee called me wise half an hour ago, I needed to ask this question. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stokes.
Welcome, Robbie. And thank you, Matthew and Christina. I echo my colleagues' comments. Actually, I think it's great that the last time we saw you was the tree code that hadn't been updated for like, you know, 40 years. And now you're coming and saying, hey, here's something that for nine years, we have not complied with case law. That is from 2015. And that, absolutely agree that it makes more sense to have a complete rewrite because the whole marketing and signage has changed over time. And so being able to really meet the times is really important. I have equally also heard about Kushi and trying to get more visibility and struggling with the size of the sign they're allowed to have. So I guess, you know, to maybe reinforce some of the things that have already been said, how do we make sure that it's easy to understand what the requirements are in the code so that folks don't end up down a path that they didn't understand? So when I had the briefing, it sounded like there was a difference between if a sign was attached to the building versus projecting from. Wow, I mean, I don't know that businesses would completely understand that, oh, this is a completely different provision based on that. And so how do we make sure we're supporting businesses that might have branding and logo and both horizontal, vertical, and maybe some odd shape that is their own artistic view for their business? And so making sure that our code does not create barriers to being able to have signs that might be a slightly different shape now than just a rectangular or a square or a circular sign. And then in terms of the outreach, really reaching broadly, because I saw the list that you have, and I guess what I'm kind of wondering is, you know, we have other groups like BDAN and, you know, East Side For All and IACS, other organizations and NGOs that also work with small business. So if we could broaden the outreach beyond what I was reading here, I think that would be helpful. And then I agree with Councilmember Newenhouse as well of, let's look at what other cities are doing. Because if they are, if they have a provision that's been updated more recently than 2015 that complies with the case law and provides a bit more of that flexibility, I think that would be important. And then lastly, to the Deputy Mayor's point, how do we create the code so that if we end up with AI or signs that are changing in what the image is, that we don't create one that is already outdated for what the industry might be coming up with? So what does that look like? And I understand the need to have certainty and predictability. But at the same time, how do we make sure that it's not already kind of out of date because the technology is changing? So anyway, just really excited that you're working on this. And I look forward to being able to adopt an updated, completely rewritten sign code. Thanks.
Anybody else? I think it's pretty straightforward. No? Yes? Everybody wants, okay? Go ahead, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, turn this on. The comments that said, and it sounds like you're setting up a very good, very modern, very needed system here. I appreciate what Councilmember said about, Newenhouse said about the Dick's Drive-In and all. I guess speaking from my lawyer instincts is that I think we have to be careful of not giving a company, you know, a private organization right to do a different signage or something that's different from and than other people. So I know that's a concern in that and how you go about doing that. But you can't, they can't have a sign bigger than somebody else like theirs, or they can't use different colors and those kind of things. It's something that we, I think it's a very good idea to, when we have companies that have really been very active and supportive and working with the city, we want to be nice to them, you know, and help. But we just have to be careful, and I think, you know, you know that, that you can't give one group based on something like that something different from somebody else because it's a public thing. A private organization doing stuff can do something differently. But is there some ways we can take this concept and work it so that it really is within the boundaries? Because I think that's a good idea. It's just that we don't want to have somebody else say, wait a minute, you're giving some other company an advantage in your signs and all that kind of thing. It's, you know, these things that sound, and Jerry, these things that sound good sometimes get kind of, you know, squishy on things. So, I mean, am I over commenting on this? Or, because I think, you know.
Are you asking me directly?
Yeah, I was wondering what you're, yeah, what do you think?
Overly squishy on what?
Well, the thing on, you were talking about.
The iconic signage?
Yeah, the sign, having Dick's Drive-In be able to do a sign that's different from some other hamburger joint or something.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be different. And I would defer to staff to investigate and look at it. If that's something we want in our toolbox, to take a look and see if it would make sense or at least give some, because every building's a little bit different. The square footage might be different. Where people actually see the sign can be a little bit different. I'm just saying, let's have a little flexibility, especially for those iconic restaurants or companies that have been here and supporting our community for a very long time. Just a little bit of flexibility there. That's all that is.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, it's coming from my lawyer background, is that, you know.
Good news is we have Robbie.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's all. I think it's a great idea to get this going.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I was going to ask that AI question too, so I'm glad that the Deputy Mayor brought that up. So and also too, I appreciate the comments that were made earlier and certainly by Councilmember Newenhouse. Small businesses, I think they need and deserve some additional technical support. So I think this is a great way to support them. And the iconic sign code too. I think that would be very interesting. You know, those signs add more than just an advertisement for a business, but I think they add some character to a neighborhood. So definitely interested in that. I think the public engagement process that you've outlined is great. I'm sure you're going to learn a lot. And two, just, you know, understanding the significance that businesses put on their signs, just in general. Certainly a lot more than just getting people to the front door. It's their identity, it's their values, it's for folks who may buy there, it's for staff. So I think it really is important. I think the complete rewrite obviously makes sense. Well, I was with Councilmember Newenhouse when we had the chance to kind of go through this meeting with the Dick's Drive-In CEO. And it just was a firsthand account of how impactful this code is. So I'm glad we're working on it. And then simplify and streamline the code while ensuring the design desires of the community are upheld. Perfect. So I think you're on the exact right track and looking forward to voting this forward.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lee.
I support the initiating work on the sign code for the reason that, you know, we have to comply with the law. And also, it's been quite a while since we updated it. And I think there are many things that we did, we have under real practice that we have been not updated. So it's time to do it. An example is, I remember, you know, we still have billboard. There's one or two, I think one of them still exists in Victoria. And it's a granddaddy, and those things should be figured out. How can we not, you know, not have them? Because they are out of the place, out of scale, out of everything. And so, and then maybe others. You know, another one is McDonald's, they have Big Arch. So there's things that we need to do to be compatible, consistent with the current standards like we've been talking about, whatever can be making the city ever more contemporary, more current, and more, well, acceptable. So I support this, but I hope that we can spend some time updating it, improving it, and making it as we just discussed. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. So great. Now I'm lost.
You have a motion.
Yeah, we already have a motion. It's already been approved. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So we have written Intergovernmental Affairs. We have our monthly update in the packet, very well-written as usual. We are not discussing it tonight, but we can always give our thoughts back to Genesee Atkins. So thank you for that, Genesee. And so this is the end of our meeting for this session and this month. And we will not be back until September 10, 2024. So we hope you all on the council have a wonderful month off. And we will see you in September. We are adjourned.